Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you're watching this at home, do not adjust your dial. You are seeing what you are seeing. We are the school committee. We have taken over the selectmen's chambers. The coup d'etat is successful. We are now running the town. Now, who wants to be on the parking committee?
I do.
Okay. We only have one volunteer, so maybe that wasn't such a good idea. So back to school committee business. You want to be the committee itself?
The committee.
Good. Can you write tickets on my street, please?
Sure.
Thank you. We start off with some sad news. It's with sadness that I inform you of the passing of Jack Burns. Jack was the husband of an Arlington public schools' retired employee, Ann Burns, who we all interacted with from 1976 to 2005. The father of former Arlington School Committee member Denise Burns, who served with us from 2007 to 2010, and the father of Claire Roberts, current town of Arlington Human Resource Assistant. So we will have a moment of silence in the memory of Jack Burns. Thank you very much. Our first order of business is a recognition of Victoria Rose, the Thompson Administrative Assistant. With much joy, I pass the baton to Superintendent Bodie.
Yes, thank you very much. We're here this evening to honor Vicky Rose, and I'm actually going to pass the microphone over to Siobhan Foley, who is not only a teacher in the third grade at Thompson, knows Vicky very well, but also is the vice president of the Arlington Educator Association. So Ms. Foley.
Yes, please.
Nice.
So it is with great honor that I am here to present this to Vicky Rose. I have said, I have been quoted saying this before, that Vicky is the heart and soul of Thompson School. Vicky started as a parent for children in the Thompson Schools with her husband, Brian, and she started from there, reaching out to the families all around our school. She then became a parent liaison contact. That was the position that Vicky held when I was hired there. Sixteen years ago, seventeen years ago. And then Vicky, and through that contact, Vicky was able to do many different things, such as a second's market, using the, so the unsold produce from the farmer's market would be given to needy families. She always knew the families who needed the most help, always. When Vicky was hired as our secretary, that never stopped. She still continued to always reach out to all of the parents in our community who need her help. And in that process, she has also been a co-founder of the Arlington Eats Program, which has been widely successful. She continues to find new ways all the time to help those families. If you ask her any question about any of those families, Vicky can tell you where they are, how they're doing, where the kids are that were in my class so many years ago, and how they're doing. She's just still that heart and soul on top of doing an incredibly busy secretary job, manning all of those now doors that we have, answering the phone and everything else that she's required to do. I can't say enough. And Vicky getting the award for unsung hero from the state legislature was just phenomenal, but just not even enough for everything that she has done for us. So, Vicky.
Thank you. And I could not add anything more other than say she is just really an amazing, remarkable woman, who I've had the privilege of knowing for a long time. And every, this award is so well-deserved, and you have our undying gratitude. Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you. We now have public participation. We have one member of the public who has signed up, Alex Moysan. Alex.
Hello. So my name is Alexi Moysan. I'm the office manager for LARP Adventure Program. We are an after-school enrichment organization in Arlington that serves sixty students ages eleven to eighteen using a multidisciplinary theater curriculum. And we are one of the sub-leasers of the Arlington Center for the Arts. So I'm sure you'll have plenty to hear today about why Arlington Center for the Arts is important, but I just wanted to share a personal story from our organization. Two years ago, we were no longer able to continue working at the Odison Middle School, and we had to find a new home for our organization. And we spent a summer looking everywhere for a new place to host our sixty students in Arlington, and we were about to give up that hope. There was the possibility our program would no longer be able to continue. And the person that came out of the blue and saved us was the Arlington Center for the Arts. For so many artists, they provide a home where none other exists. It's an invaluable part of Arlington, something that I don't see mimicked in any other town that I work with, and it would be truly a shame if that opportunity was lost to the students and wider Arlington community. So please, 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 as you consider all the important decisions you have to make, consider that. Thank you.
Okay. We now have thirty minutes allotted in the agenda for a conversation with the Gibbs tenants. We are asking for representatives of the Gibbs tenants to make their presentation. Brief presentations are better because this is our one opportunity as a board to then come back and ask you questions and talk to you. Because one of the limits in our ability to discuss and make a decision is because of the open meeting law, every conversation we have with each other must be in an open forum such as this. So it will be a restrictive environment. This is a formal meeting of the school committee, and people will be asked to make a presentation. And then after the four presentations are done with, members of the committee will be asked to ask questions or make comments based on what they hear to the people who have made a presentation. That will be the limit of the discussion, so that the people who are on the agenda here will be the representatives of the four organizations here tonight. And I appreciate your patience for that. The first one up, and we're going to go through all four, and then we'll come up and let the board go and ask questions. First one is Marian Racioponi, Executive Director of Learn to Grow. Marian, welcome.
My name is Marian Racioponi, Executive Director of Learn to Grow. Almost thirty years ago, I founded our early childhood school, Learn to Grow, located at the Gibbs, where we prepare children for entry into our public schools. I grew up and went to school here in Arlington. I've been an educator all my life. What I have to say is crucially important because it concerns many children here in Arlington. The school committee is faced with the problem of growing enrollment of children attending our schools, grades K through twelve. It is vital to also understand that the same growing enrollment problem exists for children attending schools like ours, ages one to six. Our school, Learn to Grow, with a hundred children and a waitlist of fifty more, is comprised of families with both parents working. Closing our school will have devastating impact on them. It's important to note that the majority of our children are from East Arlington and rely on us and our location at the Gibbs. Many have either one car or no car, or rely on public transportation. There are no options for us to move in East Arlington, none. I have searched for years for additional space. Please do not think of us as tenants. We are long-term integrated community organizations at the Gibbs that provide Arlington families' vital needed services. Any proposal to change and eliminate our services will only be an attempt to solve one problem, but in turn creates another one for our Arlington families. Almost thirty years ago, the leaders in town were very thoughtful as to how to use the Gibbs. They recognized that the organizations that would use the Gibbs must integrate and provide crucial services to both our children and adults in our community. Learn to Grow is the only national association of education of young children accredited school in Arlington. We have educated thousands of Arlington children and have become central to Arlington's early childhood community as a premier educator of young children. Our reputation within the community is reflected in many ways, from our enrollment in our school to graduates of our school coming back to work as teachers. Educators and parents know that our strong preschool programs are crucial for children as we prepare them to enter into public school. Learn to Grow is needed in this community. The program is an important partner to our Arlington schools as our highly experienced administration and teachers work closely with the Arlington Public Schools, preparing children academically, socially, for grade school, including children that are in need of special education services. Each year, we prepare ninety to a hundred Arlington children entering into Arlington Public Schools, representing more than eighty families. For those of you with children that went to preschool, imagine that being taken away. Imagine me having to tell our hard-working teachers, also Arlington residents, that they're out of a job, many of whom have worked at Learn to Grow for over twenty-five years. In addition, our school contributes to the community with free workshops for parents and children, local events for the community, collaboration with the Arlington Recreation Department and joint events, and outreach to our local food pantry, and spending time with our senior citizens. We assist local Arlington residents by permitting them to participate in our school as part of their college curriculum. Additionally, we work with Harvard University to conduct research in language arts studies. I'd like to leave you with this very important thought. All of us at the Gibbs serve hundreds, if not thousands, of children and adults in our community each year. Let me repeat that. All of us at the Gibbs serve hundreds, if not thousands, of children and adults in our community each year. Displacing us is not much different than closing one of our current nine public schools. We would not even think of it, not just because it's our collective responsibility to care for and educate our children, but because it would also cause unthinkable disruptions to the families we all serve. As a community, we have an equal responsibility for children ages one to six, as we do for children six to eighteen. I know it is crucial for all of us to work together to find the best solution for our children here in Arlington, but together, we need to find a solution for all our Arlington children. We're an important, connected partner to our Arlington schools. My staff and I are ready to help and look forward to working with all areas of town government to resolve this challenge. I have two of my Arlington parents who would also like to be heard as part of my allotted time.
Thank you. My name is Edith One, and my husband and I live in East Arlington, and we have a daughter who is two years old, who is currently in the toddler program at Learn to Grow and will be starting preschool in December.
For the record, please identify with your address, please.
Oh, I live in Marathon Street.
Okay.
And I believe that place is in the Thompson School District, on our end of Marathon Street. And tonight, I just wanted to share my perspective as a parent of a toddler who is in a preschool, will soon be starting a preschool program, and will also be entering the public schools in a few years. And I recognize that there are some space issues, but what I wanted to bring up is the fact that while there were several options presented several weeks ago at the school committee meeting that I attended, it didn't seem like any of them really addressed all the needs of the public school system. And many of the options seemed like they would address some of the needs, but also place at great risk the early education programs that are currently in the Gibbs. I know that in addition to Learn to Grow, there are also programs at the Leslie Ellis School, and the town, I believe, also runs a program that takes place in the gymnasium. When my husband and I were looking at childcare options, there was only one that worked for our commutes. We both work in Cambridge. They were close enough to our house, who would take my daughter when she was one-year-old, and that one place was Learn to Grow. And we were fortunate that we got off the waitlist, and that's not always the case. We have neighbors down the street who wanted to send their daughter to Learn to Grow, but they couldn't get off the waitlist. So just as there is a need in future years to serve childrens from kindergarten on up, there's a need currently, right now, to preserve childcare options in East Arlington. So my concern is that we haven't, as a community, explored all the possible options to make sure we have the proper facilities for our older children while also preserving the facilities we need for our younger children. And these are the same students who will be entering kindergarten in a few years. And my hope is that we can talk and generate more ideas so that we can come to a solution that serves everyone, as opposed to coming up with a solution that we devise quickly, but maybe may not meet all of our needs. So if I can be helpful in any way, I'd be happy to continue to talk to anyone further about those, about generating new options and working together as a town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Megan Panzano, and I'm the mom of a preschool student who's currently enrolled at Learn to Grow, located in the Gibbs Building. My husband and I both work full-time, and we rely on this program, as Edith was just referring to, to make the many aspects of our family's life possible. I live also at Alton Street in Arlington, just for the record. We're homeowners on Alton Street, near Arlington Center, and we selected Learn to Grow both for the strong educational base it would provide to our son, as well as for its specific geographic location, within walking distance from home and directly in the center of the neighborhoods that feed into the Thompson Elementary School, where our son will eventually be a student. We saw the location of our son's preschool as a critical community-building catalyst for our family, allowing our son to develop a strong group of local neighborhood friends that he could track through the Arlington school system with, as well as enabling our family to share roots with other families likewise balancing professional and parental priorities in our incredible town of Arlington. I'm an architect, a practicing designer, and a design critic of architecture at Harvard's Graduate School of Design, where I teach architecture studio. As both an architect and as a member of the Arlington community with a child already in the early stages of his preparatory elementary school education at Learn to Grow, I'm concerned with a number of aspects consistent across all of the space planning schemes proposed at the school committee meeting held on September 24th. First, that the Gibbs Building, an older and relatively small building with significant square footage limitations in its current form, was required in the space planning of three of four proposals without greatly impacting the capacity challenges of the school system at large. Second, that all schemes limited the scope of producing additional educational space critical in our school system to modular buildings in either multi-year temporary or permanent service for the creation of classroom spaces to meet the projected student populations. An expensive proposition for modulars that, through their longevity, as they're proposed in any of the schemes, would require superior finishing to make them truly functional spaces in New England throughout the duration of the school year, which would include additional insulation, more permanent and durable building enclosure materials, among other costly details. Lastly, and most troubling to me from last meeting, was the absence of any option that proposed the expansion of core shared spaces in the schools, inclusive of cafeterias, gymnasiums, auditorium spaces, and libraries. Spaces extremely critical to meeting the functional and educational needs of any school location for any students at any grade level. Modular classrooms, modulars, as they're proposed, add classroom spaces only, but what about these core communal spaces as well? So I ask, where are other space planning options for the expansion of the schools in our system that would meet the projected capacity needs of both classrooms as well as these core communal spaces? Renovation proposals that permanently expand the footprint of existing buildings, both classroom and core spaces, on-site is but one of these. And I ask that we please investigate these options that would focus on providing both classroom and core space growth on school sites, which would allow the many programs currently located in the Gibbs Building to remain in that space, critically located in the core of the communities that they serve. Thank you.
Here's a time note. We're ten minutes into the agenda item. Linda Schumaker, may I ask that you not hold up banners or demonstrate in the chambers briefly? Thank you very much. Linda Schumaker, you're on.
Hi, thanks. So I'm Linda Schumaker, the Executive Director of the Arlington Center for the Arts. Twenty-seven years ago, when the Gibbs Building went offline, the town made a deliberate and strategic decision to allocate some of that space to be developed into an art center. The town believed that investment in the arts would pay off in economic development, new business, rising property values, and a cultural vibrancy that would make people want to live in Arlington. Since that time, ACA has been both a foundation and a catalyst for the cultural life and creative economy in Arlington. The last time we met, at the last town meeting in Town Hall, I spoke about the hundreds, the thousands of creative kids and families that ACA serves with its programs. Some of them are here tonight. These programs are life-changing, sometimes life-saving, and I know, I know you believe in the quality and the importance of these programs. Some of you have children involved in these programs. I can only appreciate how challenging this is for you. It's been suggested to me that maybe the schools could partner with the art center, maybe could provide some space within the schools to try to find a place, to find some creative space-sharing solutions. But what I really want to share with you today is that the art center is not just a program or a series of programs that could be run inside somebody else's space. The Arlington Center for the Arts is, in fact, pretty much a 24/7 operation, and having that dedicated space and the dedicated facilities is critical. ACA's artist studios provide sixteen working artists with their livelihoods. These are full-time photographers, painters, musicians. Some of them are here tonight. ACA's galleries provide two hundred or more local artists a year with an opportunity to show and sell their work. Some of them are here tonight. Space like this, exhibition space, studio space, is shrinking all over the area. It's harder and harder to get this kind of space. ACA's classrooms provide, in addition to the programs that we do for kids and teens, opportunities for hundreds of adults a year, both to learn and to teach. That's an important part of what we do. And ACA's theater space provides a place for our community's musicians and performers. Last year, we had more than a hundred and fifty performances in that theater of local bands, theater groups, and workshops and classes right here in our own community. And of course, the Arlington Center for the Arts is a critical place for our community's creative kids and teens, and there's a lovely group of them here tonight. This is, these people, this organization, is the manifestation of that vision of Arlington's community planners thirty years ago, a cultural institution that provides opportunities to experience the joys of creativity and to be a spark to the local creative economy. I've had a lot of people come up to me in the last two months and say, "Don't worry. We're going to find you a place. There's got to be, there's got to be a solution. There's got to be a place." But I am worried. And these, these people are worried. I know that we want to believe there's a way to do this somehow, find another place for the art center, to recreate the programs somewhere else. But I look around. That space is not to be found. There is no comparable facility that could provide the kind of resources that we do in running the kids camp, in the artist studios, the theater, and all of these other activities. And I think about the history of Belmont. Some of you may remember the Kendall Center for the Arts in Belmont. It was an art center very much like ACA, a retired school building, artist studios, gallery, classes. It burned down in April of 1999. The town found temporary quarters for some of those people and programs and said, "We'll figure it out. We'll find another place for that organization to be." Sixteen years later, it's never happened. That place is not going to come back to life. It's over. And I just can't imagine that Arlington is going to let, can let that happen to the Arlington Center for the Arts. We have way too much to lose. It's not that easy to create an art center. This one has taken thirty years to come into being. So I know this is a critical, important moment for Arlington to figure out what to do. We are committed to providing a top-notch education to our kids. We share that. Everyone in this room shares that. We're also committed to having a town with an active cultural life for these very kids and families who are moving into town. For me, what I believe is that, in the case of both of those goals, the best solution is to leave ACA and our neighboring tenants in this one-hundred-year-old aging school building and find a better, newer, more educationally sound solution for Arlington's kids. And as Marian said, we all stand ready to work with the school committee to find a better solution for all of the constituencies in Arlington. Thank you.
No, I am not Gina Jones. My name is Ellen Dalton, and I serve as the Senior Vice President for Elliott Community Human Services, which oversees the Kelleher Center. And I'm here to talk with you tonight. The Kelleher Center has been located at the Gibbs School for over twenty-five years. Many of the folks that attend the Kelleher Center have been attending for twenty-five years. We serve men and women with developmental, intellectual, excuse me, disabilities, and folks with brain injury. These are folks that come mostly from the Arlington community. They've spent most of their adult life participating at the Kelleher Center, activities both involved with employment training, employment support, daily living skills, skill building, and a number of therapies, physical therapy, art therapy, music therapy, occupational therapy. So it has, it has a very rich core of services that these folks are totally dependent upon. But it's more than a day program. It's a safe haven. It's where they spend their days among friends, receiving the care and the support they deserve and need. Without, without this center, without the Kelleher Center, many of these folks would be left sitting at home, sitting in a chair, watching TV, or even worse, wandering the streets. This gives real meaning to their lives and to their days. And we are committed to continuing to provide these essential services. We're part of the fabric of the Arlington community. You know, we, our folks, our staff, we shop, we eat, we work, we volunteer in Arlington. We have folks that deliver meals on wheels. We have people that volunteer at the Salvation Army. They work at Stop &amp; Shop. They're at Walgreens. Throughout the Arlington community, and feel very much connected to all that goes on within the community. I think, you know, Elliott contributes to the economy. We provide jobs, we deliver essential services, and we participate in the daily life of Arlington. Our footprint, Elliott's footprint, extends beyond just the Kelleher Center. We run group homes. We have a number of individuals who are living in the community that we provide support to, and we do some office work in the, in the community. So Elliott has, has a number of people, staff and individuals, who live within Arlington, and Kelleher is really a mainstay for the quality of their lives. You know, I know that the town has been so generous in leasing the space to Kelleher for the past twenty-five years. It really, we really do appreciate it. It's affordable space. We're a nonprofit, and as most people know, human services is not particularly well-funded. The disenfranchised population does not always receive all that is needed to give them the quality of life that they deserve. I guess our concern is, if we can't be at the Gibbs School, where will we go? I mean, we just don't have the financial means to maneuver in, in the real estate market these days. The bigger problem is that to take one hundred adults with developmental disabilities who appear different and ask another community to open their arms and welcome us will be next to impossible. I'm sorry to say that NIMBY, not in my backyard, is alive and well. Arlington has been amazing and wonderful and welcoming, and we truly appreciate that and know that we wouldn't find this in many other communities. So if we do lose the space, we don't know the future of the Kelleher Center. There'll be a hundred disadvantaged and disabled people who will have to figure out how to structure their days, and I think that will mean for a lot of people, there will be nothing, sitting and waiting for the time to pass. There are no other centers like Kelleher in the Arlington area or within, within a If, by chance, some of them can move to other services, that's great, but they do not do well with change. Our folks really need the safety and security and the routine that the Kelleher Center provides them. So I guess what we are asking tonight is that you think long and hard So I guess what we are asking tonight is that you think long and hard about your decision. It has huge, huge implications for more than 100 of your community members who've struggled all their lives. This is their safe haven, and the future of Kelleher rests with you. Thank you.
Now, you are Ted Wilson.
Am I the last?
Yes. Ted Wilson is the Executive Director of Schools for Children.
There you go. You took half of my speech. So we operate the Leslie Ellis School out of the Gibbs, the Dearborn Academy out of the Crosby School, and another program in the, in the Central School. We also have many employees, many of them work in Arlington. We contribute to the economy. You know, and I was trying to think of what I was going to say tonight. And I'm not going to talk about Leslie Ellis, because you already know about Leslie Ellis and all that sort of stuff. I try to put myself in the position of, of a school committee member. I was one, once upon a time, when I was a younger man. And my belief is that you value everything that we are doing in the Gibbs right now. I don't, I don't think there's any doubt that we are all valuing the service and what have you that's being provided. So my sense is that you won't be making decisions based on how good we are, as much as I might want you to do that. But you've also indicated that you're very open to receiving community input. And I take that at face value and believe that there are additional options that need to be expressed. So I'd like to use my last couple of minutes just to share one of them and make a couple, a couple requests. I am a career educator. I like to think I have a good feel for what you're struggling with. I'm also committed to supporting schools and doing what's best for every child. So I just want to propose one more option for you to consider on the list. It's not on the list provided by the architects, but it's one that, based on the, what I think is the current project most likely to get outside funding, and that's the high school. Now, I know that's still a, a work in progress, but it feels to me like that's at least one that's, that's in the channels and has a chance. And to me, that project holds the key to addressing many of the enrollment issues you're facing, and it could very well have a funding stream to support it. And what I look at is, rather than try to create a pedagogy to justify forming a single-grade school, because I think, I think that's what you end up doing, is, is creating pedagogy around, you know, a need. I'd like to suggest that you look hard at the idea of having an eighth through 12th high school, restructured high school. That single decision, as I look at the numbers, would immediately address the long-term projected overcrowding at the Gibbs, at the Odison, which seems to be the primary reason to consider repurposing the 87-year-old Gibbs. The pedagogical approach for serving students in the eighth through 12th grades in one facility is more tested and legitimate than the alternatives which have been proposed, in my opinion. I submit that options should be put through the same analysis that the other options have received, to see how it stacks up. That's my one great idea. I have two requests. Paul, the Chair stated at the last meeting that the community is going to form a broad task force to work through this very complicated issue. We would request to be kept informed of the composition of that task force and its meeting schedule, so that we can fully participate in the discussions to be held. Even better, if we could somehow have a position on that task force. We represent a, a very important part of the Arlington community. I think we could bring value to that discussion. The second thing that I would request is if by the end of December, I'm putting that date out, I don't know what your timeline is, but giving us a projected timeline, showing us the decision points and which town body is responsible for, for making those. Because we know that this is a, a community effort. There's going to be this staging of meetings. It would really help us to, to know what that's going to look like and how that's going to play out. Obviously, whether you end up deciding to solve Arlington's enrollment surge by modifying the renovation plans for the high school and purchasing or leasing state-of-the-art prefabricated buildings, notice I didn't say modulars, or by taking back and repurposing the 87-year-old Gibbs, each of the tenants remains committed to seeking stable and permanent homes in Arlington. We're part of this community. We believe in its vision to be a diverse and exciting place, place to live and work. And we really appreciate you putting us on the, the list tonight and, and listening. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. The only people who really haven't had a chance to converse about this, certainly not publicly, are the members of this committee. So at this point, I'm going to go around to the members of the committee and allow them to discuss what they're thinking and ask any questions of anybody who is presented tonight, or to the superintendent, or to anyone else they might care to direct a question to. And I'll start with Ms. Starks.
All right, thanks, Paul. I just want to make sure that everyone here knows how much we support everything that goes on in the Gibbs, and that this is not an us versus them. And we certainly are not looking to evict or shut down anyone. As a matter of fact, it's not even really just our decision. If you were at the meeting two weeks ago, you saw over 250 people showed up. And what I read from that meeting and what everybody said and what, what I think the decision that has to be made and what I want you to understand, and I really appreciate that everyone is here tonight, is that this is not just our decision. This is going to be a town-wide decision. And that I hope that you continue to make your voices heard, not just with us, but with every single group that is going to be part of this decision. And that is going to include the town manager, the people who normally sit in these seats, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Permanent Town Building Committee. Because no matter what decision we may think we want to make, we don't have any money. The people with the money have to help us make this decision. Now, I am personally, my family has benefited from so many of the programs at the Gibbs. I personally, I remember when Tot Stop was there. Okay. So there is no way that we are looking to do anything that is just like, get those people out, put our school kids in. That is not what we're looking to do. And I really want to make sure that you understand that we are not in any way looking to do that. That this is a decision that is going to be made by the community. We hear you. I have my button, okay? I am with you. I think that we are all with you. I just want to make sure that you understand that we are all working on this. I know this is a hard decision. I don't want to evict anyone from anyone's home. I know that's what it feels like. But I do want you to know that we are working on this and that we want to work with you. We are not working against you. I really want to make sure that people understand that. And I really appreciate that everyone came out. I know that you probably all don't generally come to meetings, you know, on Thursday nights, like us. So please, make sure your voices are heard. Make sure your stories are told to everyone, not just us. Because we are simply a part of this decision, okay? And we are also going to weigh in on things and help make that decision, but it's not going to be our decision alone. I just really want to make sure you understand that. This is something that we're going to try to do with everyone. And I agree, Ted, that I want to make sure that people in the Gibbs, in the, in the current Gibbs tenants are on that committee, that everyone in town knows what the timeline is and what the decision points are. And that everyone who wants to be a part of that helps make those decisions, okay? I agree. I want to see a thriving artistic community in this town. I don't think anyone wants to see that go away. We all just are feeling this, you know, I feel like we're in this box, and now the box is getting so full, and we're just not really sure where to go. All right? And I really appreciate everyone coming out and telling us all this stuff. This is great information. I just want to make sure that it gets to everyone else, right? All those other people who are involved in the process. So thank you.
Dr. Seuss? Nope. You weren't nodding at me?
Oh, no, no. Cindy, that was beautiful. And I, I just want to add, capital planning is also a very, very, very crucial committee to, to talk to and keep informed of. And they're very much going to be a strong part of this process. I just want to reiterate that we are, do not want to make this decision in a closed room. And I think the meetings that we've had so far, I think, are indicative of that. We very much want to look for ways to involve the community. And we're actually trying to think of different ways to do that. And if people have ideas on that front, we'd love to hear them.
Jeff?
Mr. Thielman.
You can call me Jeff.
I can, but in, in a formal meeting, I won't.
So I, three of my, all three of my children have been in programs at the ACA. And I had a tour today with all tenants, and everybody showed up from the different places. So thanks very much for that. You know, one thing that's, that's struck me over the past few weeks as we, as this conversation has started, has been that I couldn't see myself supporting a decision to take the Gibbs back to be an elementary school, or a sixth grade, or an eighth grade, or whatever, until there was a real, concrete, solid plan for the tenants of the, of that facility. And so, you know, that, that's just where I stand. I want to, I would, I would want to see a really concrete, tangible, clear, detailed plan. You know, the Arlington Center for the Arts has 150 performances a year on the stage. And so someone floated the idea of maybe those 150 performances could be distributed around the district at different schools. I've run a school before, and I can't imagine having 150 performances at my school just to accommodate another group, an outside group. So I don't know. I think there's a lot of planning and discussion that has to take place. I want to see a concrete plan for the tenants before any decision is made. And the question that keeps coming back to me is, did the decision that we made to put the modular classrooms on the Stratton School make it more likely than not that we're going to have to take back the Gibbs? No, not at all. Okay.
Not at all.
Okay. That's good to hear. Because that, that email is, I got an email about that. So I wanted to clear that up. Okay, good. So, so I mean, I think it's important to understand that we're, you know, this is one option. I think we have to be creative. I like what Ted said. I also think this is a community that has some resources. And I'd like to see us look at a lot of different, a lot of different options, including, you know, looking at the possibility of building another school, because the town's gotten big enough to do that. Or that the enrollment of the, of the student population has gotten big enough to start at least having that conversation. So, thank you.
First off, I'd like to state that I support everything that's been said prior to this. We also have a space problem at the elementary level, as well as the middle school level. Eighth grade is something that has been already talked about. It's not, I want us to measure 10 times before we even consider cutting. I have asked the Chair to make a regular agenda item for enrollment and space going forward until things are worked out. We need to get all the information before we make any kind of a decision. I agree with that. We, Arlington, if, if we got a billion dollars given to us, that would not solve our problems. Space is just as much as money going down. The high school, it's, it's limited in what we're going to get from the state. God willing, we'll find out in December that we're on the list. At that point, it opens up some decisions. So that might give a little idea of the timeline. Once we know we're on the list for MSBA list for the high school, we'll know that sometime in December. And that starts a feasibility study, if we're fortunate enough to get that. I don't have the answer for any of this. It's going to take all of us. I agree with Ms. Starks and everyone else here. This has to be a community effort. The programs that you folks are involved in are, are part of the community. The community won't be Arlington without you folks. That's a fact of life. I've been involved with Kelleher for a, in the background, special needs for, my sister-in-law is 50 years old. My first experience with Kelleher, I think she was six, in the program and stuff like that. Thank you.
Dr. Allison Appi.
I can't be as eloquent as Ms. Starks, but I also feel strongly that we need a place for the arts and for all the other groups which are in the Gibbs Center. And I'm like, that's been well said here. I'm not going to go into that further. I just, what I did want to go into is just to reiterate that there's only one reason why we even consider or even put it as a possible one of many options, looking at this. And that is that the schools are bursting at the seams. Florence and Thompson know this. There's people in the fifth grade who class, who have classes, are in classes of 30. Because there are no other classrooms to put the children in, there's no other room. The Hardy is not far behind. And that's going, that's in a, that's happening in a lot of places in Arlington. The middle school is similarly bursting. I just finished having an eighth grader graduate last year, so I'm familiar with it. She had times when they couldn't have the health class and gym, because there was no classroom that they could go have their class in. They're that tight. And the building is not real amiable to easy expansion. So we're not looking at this because we're just going to do this because it's a whim, or it's, it's the easy thing. It's because we're really faced with very hard choices. And we need to look at all of the options and then decide as a community which one works best. And I'm not saying that we should use the Gibbs or not. I'm saying that we have to be able to look at everything and think about it. And if we're too scared and too early, take something off the table, that doesn't do anyone a favor, and it doesn't do our children who are in the schools a favor. So yes, it's scary to think about. Yes, we need to think about what the fates are of all the organizations. But we need to be able to talk about things. And I hope we find a different solution. But I'm going to want to talk about all the solutions. So bear with us as we go through this process.
Any other members wish to speak? Then I'll exercise the Chair's prerogative to be the last to speak. I support the comments of all of my colleagues, who are a wonderfully thoughtful group of people. I got off the school committee voluntarily in 2007. I didn't run for reelection. And when there was a vacancy, because somebody went to the dark side, they got elected the Board of Selectmen. I came back and, and ran for reelection a couple of times, just because it is such an honor and privilege to serve with these people. They are just the finest group of public servants I've ever seen. And we are now facing one of the most difficult decisions we're going to have to make, because there's a lot of moving parts. And yes, in, in a town government such as ours, there are lots of moving parts. And we will do everything we can to keep everybody informed of all the moving parts and places where decisions will be made, including town meeting. And if you are not town meeting members and wish to become a town meeting member and have a vote on the floor of town meeting for any financial decisions that are being made towards this, the town clerk's office is on the other side of this hallway. You go down there, you obtain your nominating papers. You get the 10 signatures of people in your precinct. You get on the ballot. You join town meeting. How many people in, in here are town meeting members? I know Mr. Peluso is. We've got a couple. And I thank you for your service. It's important that people who care about the schools and care about the arts are also people who are making decisions on the floor of town meeting. It's a big part of this. There, there are a lot of constraints that we have in Arlington. One is the total lack of vacant land. It makes it more of a challenge. If there were empty, big, empty parcels around, we could be thinking more about expanding out to another location and moving programs. Cost is a factor. And some, we might come up with an idea that would be a more expensive option than would be normally considered. And by that, I, you know, I, I want to point to the, the city of Barnstable. If you've ever been to Barnstable High School, they have a wonderful performing arts center. We've driven down there to hear performances. And they used municipal money. They call themselves a town, but they're really a city. They use city money to go and add on to what the state was willing to fund for a high school in order to include a performing arts center within that facility. And it's a wonderful thing. And one thing that breaks my heart, every time I go see a musical at Arlington High School, is just how awful that facility is for any kind of performing arts. Our kids deserve better. Our community deserves, deserves better. And one of the goals of this high school rebuild in, in this duct-taped high school that we have with no elevator, which is why we're here, is to have a performing arts area and a stage and an auditorium that's worthy of the beautiful, wonderful programming that, that our students put forth every year. They deserve that kind of an experience. So how do we? So how do we add to that? Maybe we add some arts functions there. It doesn't solve all the problems, but everything has to be on the table, every idea's got to be out there. We've got to consider, how do we meet the needs of our children who are in our K-12 system, as well as the needs of the community? Because arts are vital to K-12 education, and arts are vital to the survival of the community. And if I don't say it, I'm in trouble going home, because my wife is a classically trained pianist, and she teaches music at UMass Dartmouth. So, it is what it is. We are with you, and we want to find a great solution that preserves these valuable programs and meets the space needs of the children in our school system, that is also something that is affordable and the residents of the town are willing to pay for. So those are the constraints that we have. And the more you are able to convince your friends and neighbors that this is something worth having and worth paying for, the better solution we can come up with, which is why I am so glad you're here, so glad you were here last time, so glad you have decided to become engaged in this process, and willing to present your ideas to us, and no matter what it is. I kidded with Mr. Peluso that we're not going to build a new school in the swamp over at, in East Arlington. But any idea might generate the next idea, no matter how silly. So silly ideas, good ideas, whatever it is, let's get them all on the table, because we want your programs. We need to meet the needs of our kids. We want this to be an even better town in the future. So that's where we're at. Thank you for coming. We are going to the rest of our business meeting, which is going to start with a discussion of MCAS results.
Chairman?
Yes.
Just like, I'd just like to, I'd just like to mention, the clerk's office is open right now, if you want to go down and take out papers.
I don't think you can pull papers yet, can you?
Pardon me?
Can you pull papers yet for town meeting? I don't think that's-
No, you can't.
No, you can't, there's a date.
It may be a little too early.
It's February or something.
Yeah.
Each of the organizations presented some informational packets for the committee.
Okay, thank you. Give them to Karen.
Karen.
And she will make sure we get them.
Thank you.
If you want to stay for the MCAS presentation, please do. No! Our children are so smart. We'll take about a couple of minutes recess, just to allow people to leave.
Is there someplace we can put all these ideas, like all the crazy ideas? Like is there, can we start, like a Google Doc or something?
A webpage or something, yeah, I don't know. We should, we should-
We should just, just throw up-
Now we're deliberating, and we should deliberate within the context of the meeting where everybody can hear us.
Yep, okay.
I'm going to move over there, so it's like, I don't block this.
Does anyone use Chrome?
No, not yet.
I'm supposed to, because our school's-
The AC might work.
I don't know how to get rid of these things that open up-
How come you're still using Safari? It won't work. You can't, well, does it work? I'm like, well, make it work.
I know there's all these great things about Chrome, but I don't know how you set-
I'm still doing Firefox. I've gone to Firefox.
Yeah. We're going to Google, some of that stuff, but Firefox is the only one that works for me.
I just haven't gone to Chrome. I'm sure Chrome will, because it is a Google product. It will work with all the-
I do Chrome on my PC, but my Mac doesn't like it.
Yeah, that's the problem. Firefox seems to work okay.
Firefox is more Mac-friendly.
Yeah.
Once we get to Munis, I have to go through Internet Explorer, God forbid.
So, yeah, I have no idea how to do it. And I don't have, I know you how to get into Word either. I'm very frustrated. I should just turn it down, off.
He will, relax. Stop telling everybody what to do.
I'm not asking.
He's waiting until it clears. Thanks. Now so many fewer people care what else we do.
Yeah, well, we're just so good at this that-
They trust us with everything else.
Yeah. And besides, it's a lot more fun to watch us on TV. It really is.
When you're in your pajamas at home. Your pajamas are the-
An adult beverage.
Adult beverage, yes.
Here you can only have bottled water. If this were the Selectmen, Kevin Greeley would be passing out Dunkin' Donuts coffee, and you'd be up till 3:00 AM. Okay, fellow Selectmen, here. Our next order of business, Dr. Chesson will present a brief analysis on our parking and traffic issues of town.
Before I start, I want to just give you a brief introduction about how this is a very different metric this year. Last year, 500,000 students took the MCAS. This year, only 200,000 students took the MCAS, and that is because districts had the option to choose to take Park or to take MCAS. And they were able to self-select, at least through their school committees. And so the reasons why someone might self-select to take MCAS versus Park are as varied as the school districts. However, many of the metrics that we have used in the past compares ourself to the state, in terms of things as simple as the percentage of advanced or the percentage of proficient advanced, but also something like SGP, the Student Growth Percentile, which compares students against their cohort, a cohort of students that have scored about in the same area. But that cohort has significantly changed. So, Mr.-
I was just going to say, 10th grade hasn't changed though, has it? Because every, everyone in the state was required-
10th grade has not changed, that's correct.
So the figures for the-
They had no choice.
They had no choice, right. I just want to be clear on that.
Sure, thank you. So, but the vast majority of the numbers that we would normally present are not here. Accountability, which we normally would present, levels where the school would be Level 1, 2, or 3, now is not going to be available until December. And the Park results by district have just begun to come out, and the individual student results are not out yet. So you're going to see a much more shortened, much shortened presentation than you would normally see, and many of the metrics that I would like to present to you, I don't have, and even the ones I have are a little bit questionable, I would say, or different than they've been in the past, not so much questionable. But we are going to talk a little bit about the district results in ELA, and then math, science, and then talk a little bit about the plans for 2015, 2016. And we make those decisions primarily on the results that we get. And when we get to there, I want to touch on our emphasis on data, and to really point out to the committee the change that we were able to make in the school calendar this year, where elementary has a Tuesday, and what that means to it.
Let me just say as a caveat, because, you know, I play with this stuff for a living. You're absolutely right, and the frustrating thing for me is that we don't have accountability scores. And a lot of what we do in terms of looking at this in Lowell is very much comparing the state results. Because this is sort of my specialty, there's about eight of us in the state who do meet regularly with the data geeks at DESI, and one of the things that we found out was that statistically, the differences between the Park schools and the MCAS schools were very insignificant. You know, they paired out, so there weren't any real differences, urban, rural, ethnically, economically-
Oh, you mean the schools that chose Park and the schools that just-
So that, you know, a lot of the comparisons that we'd be worried about going into it, you have a smaller N by half, so it makes it a little less stable, but there isn't really a significant difference between the populations of the cohorts that were Park and MCAS.
The demographics of the populations.
The demographics, and in fact, past performance on MCAS, because they've gone for that, because they need to weight this in order for the accountability to line up evenly, because if one cohort is different than the other, you're not able to make the comparisons without making some sort of an adjustment. So, I think that, having looked through your presentation, that I think you've been thoughtful and conservative, but I think that these are valid and important points to consider, and I thank you for that. So go ahead.
So here we have, we start off looking at the Student Growth Percentile by Grade in English, Language Arts, and Math. As the committee will remember, one of the school goals is to have an SGP for, in all subject areas, for all grades to be 50 or better. And as we look at our results from this year, with the exception of Grade 10 ELA, which is just slightly below, and one could make an argument about whether that's statistically significant, certainly you could do a Z-test and take a look, but we are equal to or better than the goal that we set for ourselves. And then when we look at those breakdowns by school, so we look at elementary school SGP, again, for fourth grade and fifth grade, because we have to have something to compare to, so we don't have anything to compare third grade to, you'll see, again, some numbers in red. And while those are things that we're looking at, I also want to point out the numbers, I think this, oh, good, some numbers that are really higher over the 50. And so one of the things that we're taking a look at is the schools that we'll be doing on Tuesday afternoons, the schools that have exceptional growth, what did those teachers do? I'm actually meeting with the two teachers that are involved in this, at the Thompson School, and the principal next week, to talk about what are the things that they did in their classroom that they believe might have contributed to this exceptional growth, and can those things be replicated across other schools? So this is the overall district performance in ELA. Normally, we would also have a state percentage A and P, CPI, and median SGP. Again, I'm being very conservative as that, because the full results are not out yet. But as you look over time, we're pretty much where we've been in terms of the percent of students that advanced and proficient, and our SGP, again, across all grade levels for ELA, is meeting the 50 target. If we look at our percentage at each performance level over time, again, we see a slight increase in the students at advanced, and pretty much the same number of students at warning and When we look at the scoring advanced district versus state, now we've always looked at this, again, we, the N has significantly changed, and so we're only looking at a portion of the state. But if you look at that, the average at grades three is normally 15%. Last year, we were pretty close to that. If we look at the average at fourth grade is 15%, we were a little higher than that last year, and then right on the money for grades five. When we look at grade six, again, the average was 16%, we were a little higher than that last year, right equal to our average for grade seven, and a little bit higher than the average at grade eight. And finally, when we look at grade 10, where we do have all students across the state taking the MCAS test, the difference between the state is very, is exactly equal to what our percentage has been in the past. And if the committee would remember, last year, we did an analysis, we compared ourselves against other school districts. Since many of the, or at least half of the other school districts that we normally compare ourselves to took Park, we'll have to wait until those results come back. But if you remember from last year, we looked at almost all the school districts that we compare ourselves to, and we saw that they also were sort of plateaued in their performance improvement, and we see the same thing happening again this year. So if I look at performance, again, by grade level, and again, what we look at is proficient and advanced, because that's the target that gives us points towards our level, our accountability level, you'll see that the, we consistently have about the same width, but, so that means that we're about the same distance between the state for proficient and advanced when we compare ourselves. The same thing, again, you know, for grade four, you might see a couple percentage points up or down, but when we really look at the slope of the distance between the two lines, it's pretty much the same. And again, even though we went down, the state went down, so it's pretty much the same shape in grade five, in grade six, grade seven, grade eight, and grade 10. And this is where, because of the competency requirement for graduation, where we see almost all students across the state scoring pretty high. In addition, not only do students have to get a 240, but if they don't receive a 240, but they actually pass the test, they're still, we're required to put together a performance plan to show how they would be continuing to work towards proficient for the remaining years in high school. Again, this just tracks our percentage of students scoring advanced over the long haul. So let's talk about the analysis of what we see at the elementary level. One of the things that we've seen is a real improvement in content scores and in construct scores or mechanic scores at the elementary level in certain schools. And again, as I said, we're going to go into those schools and really talk to those teachers and find out what they did in the classroom. What we really need to start doing is also seeing the same kinds of improvement in reading. We have, as you're aware, we have adopted the Lucy Colkins Writing Program several years ago for writing. We have a very robust program as we get into that, but now we're trying to have the same clearly articulated program for reading. We have certain programs that we use for reading, but what exactly those units look like, daily lesson plans or weekly lesson plans for teachers are not currently available, were not currently available before this school year. We spent a lot of time this summer taking a look at that, and we will continue to take a look at that. You've heard about the lab program in writing, and we think that that's beginning to have an effect. We have expanded that program for this year, and the middle school, grade six through eight, the training that they've had in Lucy Colkins is really starting to take effect. So looking, going on to mathematics, again, we look at first our advanced and proficient percentage, and as you see, it's pretty much stable to where it was last year, if we look across the entire district. And again, if we look at what our SGP target of 50, we're exceeding that. If we look at our differences in our different performance levels over time, we have seen an increase in the students that are scoring at the advanced level. We have a very kind of what we call stubborn or resistant population, and that doesn't mean that they're being difficult, it just means that that's a population that's very difficult to see an increase. And I'll talk in a minute about how we're going to try to address that this year. Again, when we look at grade levels, we pretty much see the same level of, the same distance, the difference between the state and our scores of proficient and advanced at grade three. We actually saw a widening of that at grade four. We're seeing pretty much the same, there's a little bit of an increase of the state at grade five. Grade six is pretty much the same. Grade seven, we saw some improvement in the difference between the state and the district. Some improvement from the state in grade eight. And again, we're seeing significant, continued significant difference in math. So what's the important things that I want you to know about math this year? We had 36 total students in grades three through five that scored warning, which is the lowest level at all schools. Only 36 students out of all our elementary schools, students. We think that's pretty significant. And of those, 81% of those students were scoring in the 216 to 218 level, which means that they're very close to the bandwidth for needs improvement. There were no students in the low warning, in the very low scoring of the, of warning. All our elementary schools, students that were in warning were within three questions of scoring needs improvement, and that's pretty significant. We have an area of focus for PD for grades three through five, is the connection to high need students. And that's what we saw at the beginning, that 6% that almost are consistently scoring warning. Now, they're moving up through the warning levels, so that the same 6% is there, but instead of them being at the bottom of warning, they're moving to the top of warning. And so the professional development that we're going to focus on this year is working with the math coaches, the classroom teacher, and the special education teachers, and the ELL teachers for those high need students, to really make sure that they're getting a double dose, so that what's happening in pullout and what's happening in the classroom build upon one another. The growth of content knowledge for high need students at the middle school is growing so significantly, that students who were low warning are still able to access content, which is at grade level. So what this means is, in the past, the students would come out of the middle school, and if they were- and if they were, I'm sorry, out of the elementary school, and if they were high-needs going into middle school, those teachers were not able to teach 6th grade math content. They were having to teach 5th grade or upper 4th grade math content for where to start. We've seen such improvement in the elementary schools that this year, the 6th grade high-needs teachers are able to begin to teach 6th grade content. And we're going to take that even to a more granularity by looking at what part of 6th grade they're working at and how much of 6th grade they get through. And the number of sixth students recommended for math support in 6th grade is decreasing, even though, as we well know, the number of students at the middle school is increasing. We also have a number of students that have chosen in 8th grade to actually decline math support this year because they feel confident enough to do their math curriculum without that, and we're going to track the success of those students. And moving on to science and technology. Again, we see that we almost consistently have the difference between us and the state be about the same. Sometimes this goes up a little bit, down a little bit, but pretty much about the same. The same thing at grade 8, if you remember, science is only offered in 5, 8, and 10. And then, again, in grade 10, the difference is pretty much the same. One of the things I do want to call to your attention too, particularly at grades 8 and grades 5, our difference, our improvement, or our difference better than the state, is more significant in science than in almost any other subject area. As you have heard, the committee has heard earlier, we have, last year, I believe, that we have a science and technology program at the middle school that was picked as one of the exemplars for the state. And the percent of students scoring in advanced at the high school has increased. And the focus on math and ELA at the elementary may have resulted in what we consider to be a fairly static performance in science. There's only so many hours during the school day, and we're really focusing on trying to get those ELA and math achievement up, and so, we are, we may have, as a result, gotten some static performance in science. So we want to look at our subgroups and our high-need students. You'll see the percent that are reaching proficiency. The light blue line is the high-need students. The darker purple line is the non-high-need students, and the white is the all students. Now, one of the things that we noticed here is that even though there's some variation here, there's much more significant difference between the high-need students and the non-high-need students in the earlier grades than there is when we get to high school. So basically, when we look at students, and even when we look at DRA scores, we find that when, which is our reading scores, we find that when students get to 5th grade, the vast majority of the students start to make the benchmark. The problem with that is it takes us to the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade level to get them to the benchmark, and then, when they get into high, when they get into middle school, the same thing, it takes us 6, 7, and 8th grade to get them to the benchmark. So we're addressing our efforts to try to get them to the benchmark sooner, because what happens particularly at the elementary school is that students will be reading, meeting the reading benchmark, the vast majority of them, by the time they get to 5th grade, but they spent 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade working towards that benchmark, as opposed to using reading skills to learning content. So we want to make sure that we can try to get students to benchmark sooner. Again, when we look at math, we see that, again, there's a difference, you know, in the high, between the high-needs and the non-high-needs, but yet, less of a difference when they get up to the 10th grade level. So what lies ahead for us? Thanks to the committee's support, we were able to change the elementary schedule, and we have much more regular schedule for data meetings, data team meetings. And again, that has allowed us to really look at what is tracking to our ELA scores. Is it our writing scores, or is it our reading scores? If our writing scores are helping us to gain improvement, which schools are gaining the improvement, and to really working with those schools to replicate what they're doing at other schools. We have been including math, science attendance, and discipline data and review by the teams. We have a wider review of common assessment data. The curriculum directors are really focusing on this year, and we'll be coming back to the committee in each subject area to show you the different measures, because MCAS is just one measure. And MCAS, in many ways, does not measure all the things that we want for our children. It doesn't measure their ability to problem-solve what we call non-regular problems. It doesn't measure their ability to work collaboratively. There are many things that we have as goals for our students that are not measured by the MCAS, and we're going to start presenting to those, to you on a regular basis. We've had, as we've said, we have a significant increase in time for teachers to work together, and also teachers of different disciplines. So the regular classroom teacher and the ELL teacher, the regular classroom teacher and the sped teacher, and we're already starting to get some traction from that. We have a development of a district-wide curriculum team that we'll meet for the first time next week, where we have representatives from each grade level in math, science, and ELA to start really talking about where we can get those two furs across the curriculum, because the elementary school day is not getting any longer, and the elementary teachers are having to cover more. We've talked about the expansion of the lab program in writing. We've expanded our PD in math in grades K through 3, particularly in kindergarten, which was implementing Tools in the Mind, as you know, and we haven't been able to work with them as much in math over the last couple of years, and we're really focusing on that. And FOS is our full-option science system, and that is a science, hands-on, inquiry-based science curriculum that's much more in line with the next-generation science standards. We're implementing one of those units at each of the grade levels this year, and we'll be expanding that next year.
Okay, Dr., Mr. Thielman.
So I had a question on Slide 4, Laura. So it had elementary SGP by school, there were several schools, there were several grades, and, well, you had 4th and 5th grade SGP, so there are several schools that...
I'm going, I'll get there.
Yeah, that are below 50. So what...
That slide right there?
Yeah, so what, you know, what happened, and what are you doing? For example, Thompson, 4th grade, 38, ELA, 31.5, what do they have, 82 points?
Well, if this is 82.5 and this is 38, I mean, I'm meeting with those teachers to ask a lot of questions. I think it would be reasonable to say, spend a lot of time on ELA, maybe not as much time on math.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't want to accuse anybody, or, not accuse, but I don't want to make a conjecture until I meet with those teachers next week.
So you haven't done sort of a deep dive yet on those numbers with the staff?
On the specific ones, no. Again, on this one, I happen to know that they spent a lot of time on math based on their math results from the previous year.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that that has something to do with that. Bracket is a very high-performing school, and at times, you will start to see a plateauing, and so you don't see the same level of growth. Again, remember, these numbers are based on a cohort that's not exactly the same as the cohort it was last year, because it's a comparison of students to a cohort of students, but some of those students may have taken Park, so they may not be in this cohort anymore. As a matter of fact, one of the problems that we found is that I ran reports from the state from two different places and got different SGP numbers, because the N was different.
But the SGP, just to clarify, is 4th grade to 5th grade, and then 3rd to 4th?
Yes, it's 4th grade to 5th grade, but it compares not those specific students, but those specific students against a cohort of students across the state that scored about the same as them over a period of time.
Yeah.
And where their growth looks in comparison to that. If that cohort changes, then the numbers slightly, could be slightly off.
Okay. And the other question I have is, just a general question on, we're expecting a decision on Park at some point in the next...
November.
In the month, right, in November. So could you just sort of lay out for the community that, what, you know, what's at stake and what all that might mean, so people have a sense of that?
Well, the committee saw a communication plan, a PD plan, and a schedule, a possible schedule, for a draft schedule for Park if the state Board of Education does choose to go with that. I think that's probably a coin toss at this point, but we have that in place, and as soon as that decision would be made, if the decision to go with Park was made, we would roll, we have those plans all in place, and we would just, we would roll them out.
If this, well, we don't know what the vote's going to be of the Board of Education.
And if the vote is to stay the course with MCAS, we're prepared to do that as well.
So we're ready either way?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Dr. Sis.
Yeah, I just have a question about Slide 7. So that was the ELA performance over time, and we saw sort of...
This one?
Yeah, we just, we saw some analysis of a similar slide on math, where we know that only 6% were warning, and you told us a little bit about what that meant and how they weren't quite as low as they used to be, and I was just wondering, do we have sort of a similar analysis going on with ELA?
It's about the same, where students are moving into the high areas of warning. Again, this is what we call a resistant population, it's...
Is that about 5 to 6%?
Yes, it's about the same percentage, yeah. It's actually a little bit less than that, just eyeballing it.
Okay.
Mr. Heiner.
On the slides that you use for the math on proficiency, on grade level and proficiency and advanced, I pulled the numbers that you did, and consistently, there's been a drop from 6th grade to 7th grade, and then an uptick to 8th grade with one exception. This has been an issue we've been talking about almost every single year. It's dropped a little bit, I understand, but we've talked about programs, we've talked about, we've got a new math person, and I should have prefaced all this, I want to commend you and everyone else that's done this, it's great work and stuff, but I'm still concerned with this, this drop and then uptick again, from 6, down to 7, then up to 8 again.
Well, that's also actually across the state. The same thing happens in ELA, that students, especially if school districts that don't have solid writing programs, will sometimes see a drop in their scores in 4th grade and then go back up in 5th grade. So, I'm not saying that that's acceptable, what I'm saying is that we have, this is only our third year on the math curriculum, so we only had two years' worth of the math curriculum, and I feel like we're continuing to make progress, but not, perhaps not as quickly as we would like.
This stands out from 2007...
Yep.
...all the way up to 2015, with one exception. It's a steady pattern. You and your staff have done a lot of work in it, but there's still an issue there.
Yep. And I would agree that that's still the same thing as here. It's still, it's something that's very difficult to change, but we're not accepting that, and we're continuing to work on it.
Thank you. Dr. Allison, am I?
I had two questions. First, is there going to be another MCAS presentation letter?
Yes, when we get all the Park results, we'll do another presentation, because we'll have the accountability results in December.
Okay. And second, I'm now, I'd like to look at the last few slides, on 40 and...
In science, the science slide?
No, it's the high-needs versus non-high-needs, way at the end of the presentation.
Sure.
So my question is, what is the churn of high-need students in our district?
That's a good question.
And how much of that, you know, because I'm thinking, you're thinking about, what are they learning, but if we have a whole bunch of students coming in, we haven't taught them before, but they can still have a growth score calculated, I think, because...
If they were in Massachusetts prior to coming to us, yeah.
Yeah, and so, I'm wondering, I'd like to know, just for understanding our numbers better.
So you're asking for the turnover of how many high-need students are new going in and out, or just coming into the district later in their career?
Going, going in and out, I mean, just having some idea, because we're, you know, some of the numbers that we're looking at, we didn't actually teach them the last year or stuff.
Right, correct. I'll have to, that's going to take some doing, but I think that is a very interesting thing to ask, and I will take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Starks?
I have no questions at this time.
I look at the 7th, yeah, I have a different view of the 7th grade. You know, the thing is that some years, some tests are harder than others. And on the ELA side, the 4th grade ELA test is statistically the hardest.
Hardest, yes.
Because you can, you can actually track it by looking at the growth scores, because if the growth scores are high and the score, the actual scaled score went down, you know, you're also running against the difficulty of test. And this year, our 7th grade math growth score was 54, which is a very strong growth score. So, you know, we've had movement. I don't know that it's raising to the level of concern in my mind. I think that this year's set of scores, just on the outset, are very strong, and I'm very grateful for the teachers of Arlington, who have worked hard in terms of providing a good, solid education to children, not teaching to test, but because good instruction yields reasonable results, I think that we have a lot to be proud of. Thank you.
And I would like to jump on that for one second. I had a conversation with the math director about that today, and that's why I think it's so important for us to come in and present some other metrics to you, because we do not teach the test. As a matter of fact, we cut out the after-school because we really felt like we were not getting an impact from it, the after-school MCAS program, and put that work during the day, but really work at trying to get children to be able to persevere, to solve non-regular problems, and we really feel that with that, over time, we will get better results, plus we will get students that have other skills that will serve them better in life.
I think I saw Mr. Heiner's hand wave.
I was just going to ask, the phenomenal scores at the 10th grade, is that the incentive to graduate?
It also, there is also probably a widely-accepted view that that's probably one of the least rigorous tests, because it's based on standards that many students have surpassed by the 10th grade.
What, those that don't pass it, is the remedial programs, or they just take another math course, or do they?
What, we...
They have two more years to graduate.
Actually, the vast majority of our students take four years of math, whether they pass the MCAS or not. That's something that we've seen a significant increase in over the last three years since Mr. Coleman took over as math director, and since we began to expand our offerings to students. But the students are required to continue to take math classes until such time as they demonstrate proficiency. Arlington is a very strong track record. We have not had a student who has not been able to graduate because they have not passed the math exam.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Spiegel, you're on for a diversity report.
Thank you.
Did you send your slides?
The report should be, it's on the agenda.
The report's in the, the report's on the agenda, it's in NOVA, so...
Okay, I think Ms. Fitzgerald's going to put it up and move over a little.
I don't have it.
Do you want me to?
It's on NOVA.
Do you want me to link to my...
I have my stick, I'm sorry.
Oh, I can get it.
Oh, there it is.
Do you want me to, just, I can put my laptop on there, if you want it.
We got the uptick in staff.
Did you see this?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, the report from this year, what it shows is the number of previous hires that we've retained from 2015. The time period that this covers is October 1st, 2014, through September 30th, 2015. So, a lot, the bulk of the new hires were new hires for this school year, but there were quite a few who were hired between October 1st and the end of the school year, and some for summer employment as well. The new hires include, and the previous hires also, include substitute teachers, community education teachers, Arlington after-school teachers, so, and as well as our regular classroom teachers and teaching assistants, and all professional staff in the district. What this shows is, at the beginning of, as of October 1, 2014, we retained the previous hires in each category, Asian, Black, Hispanic, Native American, White, and then ones who were not self-identified, and then the numbers of new... of new hires that we added after October 1, 2014, till September 30th, 2015, in the various categories, Asian, Black, Hispanic, Native American, White, and not self-identified. One thing to explain, the number of new hires seems large overall, because that does include all the new substitutes. We have made a concerted effort, and Ms. Foley may see that there's still some days where there's not enough substitutes in the schools, and we are still working on that, but we are trying to bring in new subs continuously through the school year. That is one area of, that we're addressing, and so there's a lot of turnover and churn in the substitutes. We've, that also includes a lot of community education, Arlington after-school, as I said, and new teaching assistants, where we have a lot of turnover among our teaching assistant staff. I think overall, the report shows we've, we have, I think, met the goal as defined by the school committee's goals, in terms of diversity hiring and going above the baseline from last year, because if you go, let me scroll down. Scroll down from 2014, the total staff in each category, excuse me, the total staff in each category is, is higher. But, so I mean, overall, I think we met the goal as outlined by the school committee's goals. However, I think we still have a lot of work to do among the, the goal to diversify our teaching staff, the staff that is in front of students on a daily basis in the schools. We've done a little bit, we've done some, some good for that. I think one program that I think has done very well is the Arlington after-school program, both at Hardy, Thompson, and Odison. They have been able to attract a more diverse workforce, which helps, I mean, a lot, there's a lot of students in our district who take advantage of those programs. We have, in our professional staff, been able to hire some new, new staff this year, in the, in our data department, and one of our new directors of social studies is an Asian man, and so we have done, we've had, had some, some good hires, they're great people, they're great hires, and they do meet the goal of diversifying. We do still have some work to do. I think especially in the classroom teaching role, we do not have the diversity of staff that we would like, and we're still working on that, and it's a, an ongoing goal to increase that, the diversity of that, of the teaching staff and teaching assistant staff. We did lose some staff who we didn't retain this year because of various reasons. They went back to school or went to other jobs. Teaching assistants, we still have an issue with retaining teaching assistants. Part of that is our salary. Part of it is the nature of the position tends to be a starting point for people looking to become teachers, and if they're, if there isn't a position that they fit in here, they'll look elsewhere. So, there's several reasons for that. But we, you know, we stress this as a goal to the principals and the hiring administrators continuously throughout the year to, to work. And I can, the other thing I'll note, and it's not an excuse, but this is a statewide issue in terms of having difficulty expanding the diversity of the teaching force to reflect the students that we deal with and see on a daily basis. The city of Boston, Boston Public Schools, has had some well-publicized articles in, in the Globe, that they're having difficulty because they've had a lot of teachers retire, and they haven't been able to replace them, and so we're competing with the city of Boston, and Cambridge, and, and other suburban districts, and it's, it's a challenge, but we continue to, to work and improve.
Okay, down the list. Ms. Thielman.
One question I have, I was just doing some quick percentage math, is, I think that what a really good goal would be, would be, try to at least meet or have the same percentage on staff as we have in students. And so, one question I have is, do we have the numbers of the percent of-
Students.
-diverse student body that we have? I mean, that would be interesting to me, to make, to kind of see it, that, I mean, I realize that, you know-
So, we do have those numbers. I don't have them in the slide. I could-
Right, 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 yeah, yeah. No, but if we could get those up, my interest is trying to see if we can at least try to line those up a little bit.
Sure.
So, if we have those, if you could share them sometime.
Dr. Allison Ampi.
Just a second, I lost my page. I wanted to commend you, so I was tinkering with these at home, and I just want to point out for our audience at home, that we went from a, from a total of sixty-six people of diverse backgrounds in 2014 to a total of seventy-nine in 2015, which is a substantial increase. And that's, even though we increased our total staff also, we still, the percentage went from 5.4% up to 5.8% in terms of people of diverse backgrounds. So, both of those are nice jumps, and I recognize it's in the face of large competition for hiring and stuff, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Seuss.
Yeah, I was actually also going to point out the percentage jump, which is small, but it's progress, and we commend you for that. We recognize that this is a very difficult problem. We also think that it's very important to always keep it in the forefront of our policy goals, and I think that we're doing that.
Mr. Heiner.
Uh, you mentioned hiring substitutes. Are they employees of the district?
Substitutes are employees of the district, because-
Okay, we're no longer using Aesop?
We are using Aesop, but that, they're employees in that they get a paycheck from us, they are on our payroll, they get a W-2 or, at the, so, and they have to be fingerprinted and queried and everything, so yes, they are our employees. But they are, they are temporary. They're, they're sort of per diem-as-needed employees.
Okay, then, let me just add this. If I was a substitute, I'm going through the Aesop system, am I, am I correct?
Yes.
Not, we, okay.
Well, you come, well, there's, substitutes are hired through my office. I, I meet with all the substitutes, or Kelly Pigott in my office will meet with new substitutes, people who are interested in substitute teaching in our district. We're interviewing them, we're checking their references, but then we put them into the Aesop system, and then they can take jobs through that system.
They don't collect unemployment during the summer?
They do not collect unemployment during the summer if we give them a reasonable assurance that they have a job as a substitute in the next school year.
Thank you.
Mr. Thielman.
So I want to commend the district for the increase in the number of people of color that have been hired. And the other thing is just to understand that this is a, it's a pipeline issue in education.
It is.
It's, the challenge is getting people who are in, people, young people of color in high school and in college to think about a career in education. So, the extent, to the extent at which, to which we can get involved in addressing the pipeline question, we can help solve the problem over the long term.
It is a pipeline question, and I think the schools of education are well aware of that, and are doing, taking steps to try to address that situation as well.
Any other members? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's evaluation. The question has come up, is exactly what the procedure and what the role of various subcommittees are with regard to the superintendent's evaluation as we prepare to meet our obligation. One of my frustrations is that the state has failed to give us accountability data in a timely manner, and that's one of the things that we count on getting in September to think about the evaluation of superintendent, yet there are certainly regulations that we need to follow to align with the statewide educator evaluation protocol. So, right now, I'm going to open this up. I know a couple of members want to talk on this, so I'm going to open it up to the board to engage in a conversation about our next steps and where we're going to go. With the, you know, who would like to go first? Mr. Thielman?
Uh, thank you. I hadn't raised my hand yet, but good, good.
Well, we got to get it started somehow.
Okay, great. So first of all, I just want to make sure we're clear on the timeline. When are we to complete the evaluation, get it to the chair? What's the deadline to get something to you, Paul?
Um, do you have the policy up, Mr. Heiner?
The, what we tried to get together and agree with last year is that we would be submitting our individual evaluations to the chair by the second meeting in October.
Okay.
But, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
So let me- I, I agree with the, the chair, that, but one of the elements, because we moved, normally, an evaluation would be done at the end of a school year. This committee wanted the accountability data and things of that nature available to us, that's why we moved it to November. Now, that, as the chair said, we, normally, we have it by now, and we don't have that. So, I don't know where we're going to go with that.
So here's, I just want to make this, this is a point I was thinking about the other day, is, this is a little history on this process. We, years and years ago, we amended the curriculum instruction and assessment committee to be the curriculum instruction, assessment, and accountability committee, and specifically to monitor the superintendent evaluation process. Then, the state changed the law, or the, the, the regulation, whatever they changed. The DESI changed its rules. And so, when DESI changed its rules, we set up a specific set superintendent evaluation subcommittee to make sure that we were in compliance. And the thinking, I think, which was a good decision, and I think the thinking behind that decision was, at some point, that subcommittee would go away, and then the curriculum instruction assessment subcommittee would, as part of its regular charge, monitor, manage this process, meaning that that committee would meet in November, December, January, February, and come up with a plan, be clear on directing the superintendent about what evidence we needed, be clear on timelines, so that when we got to the fall, we could, we had a plan in place. So what, what, I think what's happened here is that we forgot about kind of shifting everything from the superintendent evaluation subcommittee to the curriculum instruction assessment subcommittee, so that we could plan the process better. And I think what we, the best thing we could do at this point, because we're, this is due next week, the next meeting, rather, in two weeks, these are, are, are sentiments on the, on the superintendent's performance to do next week, or two weeks from now, the best thing we can do is charge the curriculum instruction assessment subcommittee with getting a plan in place for next year, I think, at this point. And I think that the, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee needs to kind of go away, because its charge is over. We are in compliance, we're in compliance to the best of our capacity with state regulation.
Mr. Heiner.
I would agree with that 100%. The, one thing that's most important is the suggested months of, of that planning, the initial planning, I would hold to that.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's very important, just for the superintendent, to, to know where, what we're expecting in performance. And I would just add, specific dates throughout the year
Yeah.
for checking. That's all.
I agree, yeah. I mean, so I don't even know if it's, I, I don't even know if the evaluation subcommittee is-
I just want to add, I was surprised that the, I thought the evaluation committee was going to end a year ago, last June, and for some reason, we kept it going again. I agree with you 100%, so do we need a motion?
What do we do? I saw, I, I didn't, do we need to take-
You can make a motion to dissolve the superintendent evaluation subcommittee and move the work back to CIAA.
So moved.
CIAA.
CIAA, curriculum instruction, assessment, and accountability. We have a motion by Mr. Thielman, second by Mr. Heiner. On the motion, any debate or discussion? Hearing none. It's time for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous vote, six, nothing. The evaluations by the policy are due by the next meeting. Mr. Heiner.
I would, I have something to report. Do you want me to wait till, that, well, the committee doesn't exist anymore to report, so.
Well, you, you can report out anyway.
Okay, I'll report out then.
Because you're reporting history, even though we abolished the committee, there, things happen, and we can talk about it.
Fine. I'll wait till, you want me to do it now?
Well, you can do it now, we're on the topic.
The, one of the things we did this year that's slightly different is we, we set up a survey for administrative staff. A lot of bumps in, in it, I apologize for that. Mr. Good did a phenomenal job doing it. I have it, I'm, this is not for public consumption, because I'm just reporting that it is available. When we deal with it, then it will become a public document. I have it, a paper form, but I also have it electronically. I've shared it with a couple of members already electronically. Those that want it either way, just let me know. I'll bear it. It is forty-nine questions. There were thirty-five people initially were invited to participate. They had to drop one, because that, one of the invitees was resigned. So out of thirty-four potential, twenty-one responded. Mr., at my request, I asked Mr. Good to extend it one more week with, to everyone, and sent out a reminder, and he got several more people. This will be available to you in either form, just let me know by the end of the night.
I definitely would like, I think we all should get it.
No, I mean, you want, whether it's paper, paper or electronic, either way.
Uh, we'll give it out after the meeting, which will mean it'll be available in the, at the next, it'll be publicly available, attached to the superintendent's evaluation
Right.
at the next meeting. Dr. Allison Ampi, by the way, was very kind to go and download the evidence and arrange them in folders, so that if any member of the committee wants it, just pass the thumb drive over to them, and you can stick it in your computer and, and, and work with it that way. Dr. Allison Ampi.
Oh, just to be clear, all I was doing was organizing. I'm not, I haven't changed anything, except to make it easier to find what goes where. So, what do we do if, when we're looking at the evidence for the goals, we have questions about it? Either we feel we don't understand how it applies, or we think it doesn't, if there's questions where we feel there's more substance needed, what do we do?
You, you certainly have the option of inquiring back to the superintendent, or the assistant superintendent, who's also qualified to answer those questions, because, you know, the data is standard district data that I, that I'm sure that the assistant superintendent can answer. If there are personnel issues that are a little more technical, the HR director would be able to respond to you. You can also extend queries to the chair.
Should I extend all, okay, I'm not saying I have them, I'm, this is, I'm doing this in case anyone here has them. Do we all extend all inquiries through the chair?
Uh, no.
Or do we go straight?
I would not, you know, the thing is, if it, that's-
And then, then my other question-
The question really is, no, you should communicate individually on your concerns, and if there is something that the person you query from deems important for the whole committee to see, like if there was an error in some of the data, or there was a technical thing, and they communicate back to us, they'd be creating a public document. So, you know, there is a certain amount, amount of discretion in terms of the level of questioning that you're going through. How do I fill out the form? Question is obviously mundane and not worthy of communication to the rest of the committee, but if you run into something and you're looking at some piece of data which has, which would impact the, the rest of the committee's ability to do the evaluation, I would ask that that be communicated back to the full committee and to Karen Fitzgerald, so that the public document is preserved. Mr. Heiner.
I think technical issues, things that are in, wrong errors and things like that, I have no problem with that. But, this data is, is data in support of a goal for the evaluator, the superintendent. I'm not trying to dump it all on the superintendent or anything, but I, I would be adverse to someone else making a judgment about what I feel is an important piece of data. So, I mean, specific data and stuff like that, if I, clarification or if I don't feel that it's appropriate or whatever, I feel a responsibility to go to the superintendent and not to other people, even though, one of the pieces of data was this presentation tonight, in, to achieve a goal. Although Dr. Chesson presented it, Dr. Bodie put it in as a piece of evidence. If I have a question about that, I feel it's important. She may direct me to Dr. Chesson, but I think it's my responsibility to go to her first, if I have questions about things of that nature.
Seems to me-
The only, the only thing that I would point out is that, you know, factual informa- there, there's a lot of things that are non-controversial or non-interpretive, so that if you're asking, say, how many kids were in the seventh grade, whatever, that's tied to what, that could
I have no problem with that.
Be spread anywhere out. And, don't forget, if you as a member feel it's something that the rest of the board should see, you have the ability to forward it to our administrative secretary, who will then forward the rest of the committee. So everybody, be it staff members- So everybody, be it staff members or individual committee members, who uncover something or see something that should be brought to the attention of the rest of the committee, can pass it through Karen Fitzgerald, so it gets back to the rest of us. We want this to be an open, transparent process, because the most important, one of the most important things we do is evaluate the superintendent, and that by law, needs to be a public process. And by law, the documents attached to it and supporting it are public documents, including everything we write and present at the next meeting. Mr. Hayner.
Excuse me, we're not presenting at the next meeting, we're giving it to you by that time. It's in November.
And then presenting, doing the final presentation in November. So you're giving it to me at the next meeting, or, but, you know, it, at the presentation, it becomes a public document.
Correct.
I'm running the meeting, losing track of my time. Any other questions, comments on the topic of Superintendent Evaluation? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The format we're supposed to use, we have that, do we have that, do we have that, Karen?
Have we distributed the evaluation tool to the members? Let's do that.
I assume it's the same.
It'd be the same as last year.
DESI document we used last year.
Let's make sure that every member gets, gets an email to them, so they can download it and work off of it.
Thank you very much.
Because that would be an electronic document we'd want to manipulate, because I want electronic documents from everyone. Anything else?
No.
Hearing none. Policy BEDB, Agenda for Format Preparation and Dissemination. Well, the Chair got a little reactive on Tuesday. And Mr. Hayner said, can we put something on the agenda? I said, no, it's too late, the last minute, ba-ba. Then I went back and read the policy, and said, it wasn't too late. And I went back to Mr. Hayner and said, I'm sorry, we can put this on the agenda, because I'm thinking that the, the notice for meetings is longer, and probably should be, at least to my way of mind. I was about to throw a fit, because we didn't have financial reports, and it was within the deadline. So, my fault, but I think that there's a valid point. So I went on the MASA listserv, and, and anyone can go back on there and look at what the responses are, and did a quick poll of what the lead time is for agenda items being finalized and published either on paper, distributed as packet items, or posted electronically in the, in a device such as Novus that we're using. And, the other thing that's going about is that when we originally set up the policy, we were unsure of the software we were using, and we took a conservative approach that we would open the support documentation to the public at the time of the meeting. The selectmen do it at the time of the formal distribution, which would be a couple of days earlier. Having seen the way the product works, I think that we might want to revisit that as well. So for all those reasons, I think that having a meeting on a Thursday, getting stuff on a Tuesday night, which is the 48 hours that are required under the policy, is tough for us to really thoughtfully digest some of the material that we have. And, I'd like to improve our transparency and get the information out to the public earlier, because now that we are a little more familiar with using the tool, that, at that public distribution point, let the public see what we're looking at and what we're thinking about. So, I'd like to ask the Policies and Procedures Committee to take a look at Policy BEDB, Agenda Format Preparation Dissemination, and come back. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Mr. Pierce has asked me to stand in for policy, since he was unable to be here for tonight. So, as such, I accept, and will do that.
Mr. Hayner.
I agree with the Chair and everything. I took no offense from the Chair. I didn't hear anything in your tone. What I, what I think I heard is that, as far as documentation that's coming, even if there is an agenda item, documentation stuff, unless it's an emergency thing, if it isn't provided, it doesn't show up at that meeting.
Right.
I mean, and that, I appreciate everyone having to work very hard and getting things in time and stuff, but as the Chair said, when do we get it in a timely manner, we have a chance to digest it, and we're far more efficient. And that shows. When I first came on the board, it was no, meetings were three, three and a half hours long. Right now, a long meeting is two and a half hours. And I think that's because of the efficiency that we've established among ourselves, and with the support of the administration and everything. So I would, I'm, I'm going to suggest that to the Policy Committee when they go forward. Thank you.
I think one of the successes of this committee is that we operate under a no surprises rule, and that we don't put things on the table at the night of the meeting. That's, that's very important. I think that it builds collegiality, and it gives everybody an equal shot at it. And, and I think the community's got a right to see what we're thinking about as well, before we talk about it. So, these are, these are important things, and I, I thank the committee for supporting that, and I hope that the Policies and Procedures Committee will look at this and make some adjustments. Any other conversation on this agenda item? We are now to monthly financial reports. Ms. Johnson.
I do have a PowerPoint for the-
Oh, we do have a presentation in here.
We have a presentation.
Yes, that is a PowerPoint.
The last item is PowerPoint, but we'll forge ahead without it, it's fine.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I would like to say that the, the good news is that we're tracking pretty much in the same place we were last month. It's very early in fiscal 16 to be drawing deep conclusions, but so far, so good. As far as FY15, we came in remarkably close to exactly on budget, which was a little surprising to me as well. It turned out that we had encumbrances in lines, that over the years that we've been tracking expenses very closely, we make a point at the beginning of the fiscal year to encumber the entire amount we think we're going to need for the fiscal year in items such as cleaning supplies for custodians, custodial contracts, energy, gas, electricity, the big ticket items that we're always going to pay, no matter what happens. And so, we encumber the amount, and then we pad it a little bit. Particularly, my staff is eager to make sure we never run short. And so, in fact, we didn't run short, we ran right on. And I thought we were going to be a little short. So, it worked out very well. Oh, yeah, there it is. Yay! Oh, thank you for bringing it back. So do I click it this way?
Yeah, do, yeah. What you're saying? Yeah, the one right, the one on top is the point. Point of the thing. We don't get the whole thing. Doesn't matter, I got it. Yeah, he can.
Okay, yeah, it does.
It's the PDF.
Yeah, it's a PDF, so just scroll down.
Oh, so it's not. All right. So additionally to coming in pretty much on budget for FY15, we were able to return the $200,000 we promised to the town, that to be set aside in the next town meeting into a stabilization fund for future special education needs. So it's important to remember that when you look at the final expenses, that $200,000 is not included in our expense amount, because we haven't actually spent the money. So it came out of reserves and gone, has gone to the other.
Go down to the end of the PDF, it should give you the size thing on the screen. Make it small.
The minus.
Hit the minus.
Hit the minus.
Hit the minus. One more.
There you go.
There we go.
Yep, can you, go ahead. So, there isn't anything extremely exciting to report. Special education continues to be about 30 percent of budget. Teacher staffing continues to grow modestly. It's gone from 47 percent in FY11 to 53 percent in the budget of FY16. Teaching assistance have been more ripply, but they're going up, and they're now, since 11, they're at their highest point of 4.2 percent of budget. And if you could scroll to the charts, okay, this first chart shows regular education and special education spending and total dollar amounts. The next slide, I think, is very interesting. Special ed is, again, in blue, but as you see, the percentage of total budget has remained remarkably steady over this period of time. And I think that speaks, I think it speaks very well to our management of things. You know, we're undergoing a period of growth, and yet our sped is holding very steady. If you looked at the backup numbers for FY15, you'll notice that I did the year-over-year percentage growth for special education, and that we experienced only 1 percent growth. We were essentially flat, and I'd like to commend our special ed director for her financial diligence in her first year at holding the line. But we all know special ed needs aren't something that you can hold the line on indefinitely, and I expect, you know, we've already started discussions. I expect that there's going to be significant requests, you know, basically to keep pace with our enrollment growth.
Okay, Dr. Allison Ampe.
Is this including out-of-district tuition?
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. And there's one more, if you, if you would. Thank you, sorry, torturing you. And this just shows teachers, teaching assistants, and other expenses. So you can see back in 11, other expenses were taking up a larger chunk of budget. But this, these are consistent numbers. It's not like that suddenly there was health insurance in or out, or anything like that. This is an apples-to-apples comparison. So we're shifting more money into teaching services of various kinds. And I think that's an interesting trend. And it certainly speaks to our administrative efficiency as well, that we're getting it done. So are there questions about either 16 or 15, or anything else I can-
All right, well, Mr. Thielman.
You know, we had a conversation in, I don't know, FY13, FY14, when Kathleen Lockyer was the Assistant Superintendent for Special Education, and about reducing TAs.
Yes. We did do that, there, you could see the pinch. And that year, it was decided that rather than having anywhere from six to nine teaching assistants at a school, we'd reduce the teaching assistants to two inclusion TAs, and we would add a second special ed teacher-
Correct.
-to each building. And I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I think we're contemplating the need for additional special ed teachers at the school.
Okay.
Now, whether that can, that can result in reducing teaching assistants. You know, as the need grows, the cost-effective, fast solution is to add teaching assistants.
Right.
But once it reaches a certain point, you know, it's penny-wise and pound foolish. We want to be thinking about licensed professionals, and I think we're reaching that point again. So it wouldn't surprise me, if this goes on for a long time, that we'll see TAs get fatter and fatter, and then go through a skinny spell, and the teachers will bump up, and then fatter and fatter, and then a skinny spell.
Yes, I'm just, I'm, okay, so I just want to understand, was there a shift in strategy on TAs?
Yes. Yeah, that was very specific to that year.
So we shifted clearly a couple of years ago, and now we're kind of-
Yes, and now we've built up the TAs again, to keep pace with enrollment growth and IEP demands.
Right, I was just, I was just going to say that I think that a lot of what you're seeing is that we have put TAs in a lot of classes that got large.
Yeah, I'm right, I know that.
So although, although the special ed department may not be using them, I know that we're using them in kindergarten classes, and a lot of classes where the sizes were so big that we really wanted to make sure there was another set of eyes in there, so-
Yeah, no, I-
That could be the reason why, because our class sizes have gotten big as the, as the enrollment scrunch is pushing them in.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Hayner.
My usual, on the FY expense report.
Which year?
15.
Okay, 15? So last year.
On page four.
Okay, hold on, I got to get there.
Oh, sorry.
Which view of 16, of the FY15?
Expense report?
So this year's.
Well, that's FY16.
That's 16.
I'm, I-
FY15 expense report.
I'm sorry, it's the one I clicked on the-
No, it's always difficult when you're discussing fiscal, when you're discussing multiple fiscal years.
Okay, every one of the exhibits that were given to us says 15 on it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it?
They say FY15 expense report.
I'm pretty sure this is the, it's probably 16.
I'll just say it.
It says 16 when it's labeled.
Let's open.
But it says as of a 15 date, because it's the fall.
No, 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 the titles on our Novus thing say FY15.
Title on Novus is FY15 expense report 10-6, $2,050.
Let's go to 16, your 16, and see if the numbers match.
Okay.
Okay? Page four.
It does say FY16 when you open the document.
Oh, it does? Okay, great.
I just want you to-
Thank you?
It does say.
Okay, all right.
It's just a label.
I'm looking at it, and I'm not-
Okay.
Okay, so it's the, it's the general fund budget tracking report, yep.
On page four, line six.
There's only three lines on this report. There's only three pages on this report.
No, there's 15 pages.
Yep, the one we got.
Okay, so that's, that's the FY15 report, the multiple year report.
Yes, multiple years.
It's the multiple year report, okay. All right, all right. And which view are you looking at? Are you looking at it by org, object, or project?
However you send it.
No, the one I have is actual line item numbers.
Okay, that's by org, that's by cost center.
Mine has line 68, item number 6866, Legal Services Special Ed.
6866, okay, so you're looking at it by program? 6866.
I've only been doing this four years, someday I'm going to get this right.
Okay.
Okay?
Page four, yeah.
Page four of 15 in the FY15 reports. Okay, I'm with you, I see it now.
Legal Services, $150,000.
That's the budget, yes. That's the FY16 budget, not the actuals to date.
Down just a bit, 6905, I think two, two or three lines down?
Yep.
It says School Committee, Legal Services School Committee, $252,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you go to page seven, line 83102, it says Legal Services, $300,000.
Okay, what's going on there?
Well, it's going to get even more, because on page 15, the exact same, 83102, is $450,000.
Page 15. Well, page 15 is special ed only. Because page, page 15 is special ed only.
I understand.
Yeah.
But we have, so the 150 that I first gave you, the 6866, said Legal Services for Special Ed, it was 150.
Yes.
83102 says Legal Services 150 on page 15. So you just said that that sped back there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But the exact same line on him, 83102, had it at $300,000.
Because it's a combination of both special ed and general ed.
Okay.
But it doesn't add up to the general ed line.
And the 6905 is $252,000.
6905.
Trying to cover you, Siobhan.
Sorry, sorry.
6905.
So, I mean, Diane, you always keep, you work it out, but the numbers just didn't-
I'm sorry, I'm finding it very difficult to stay with you. It would have been helpful if you could email me ahead of time on this one.
Okay, I just found it tonight. I mean, just look at, I will, I will send you an email on this.
Please do, I'll be, I'll be happy to answer, but I'm having a hard time following you.
Just want to say for the public, I had done some emailing with Diane on another, Quick Service, straightened me right up.
All right. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know what's going on in 6905. I, I don't know what's going on there. I suspect, oh, yep, I do know what's going on there. What's going on there is you're seeing the combination of both the money set aside for legal services and for settlements, because they would both be under that program code. But legal settlements appears on a different object. So it's, you're, you're looking at three different cuts of the data?
It would make it easier for me, I don't know about the rest of the committee, if we had a straight item, line item, that said total legal expenses budgeted, and then break down for sped, settlement, or whatever you want to do it. Because it was just difficult to, in my head, and you just answered it. But the 300,000, the difference between the 300,000 and the 252?
Well, there are three pools of money for legal. There's a, there's a pool of money for special ed legal, there's a pool of money for general ed legal, and there's a pool of money for legal settlements that could be used for either.
Okay. And that would be a total legal expenses budgeted for money?
Right, and they're, depending on the view, either in two places or three.
Okay, but we don't have a total, is that 300,000, a total?
That is the amount of both special ed legal and general ed legal. And the settlement line is 98? I'm quoting from fallible memory here.
Okay, we'll talk, we'll talk. Talk off camera. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Hearing none?
Thank you.
Superintendent's report. You're sitting all nice and comfy in the back. The Chair of Honor.
Well, if somebody else could block the light.
Spotlight.
It's very powerful. I have a few things this evening. First of all, I want to start out by recognizing Laura Chesson. She was invited this year to present at the CIO Summit Conference in Chicago last week to talk about- to talk about our technology program vision. And this was a conference that was, that was sponsored by the Journal of Technology and Learning. So I want to congratulate her. It's, it's an honor for Arlington that one of our, one of our administrators has been asked to come and present. And I was going to ask her if she would just talk for a second or two, or maybe longer than that, about what were the main messages you were giving the...
The nice part about the conference for us is that we were recognized for something that we talked about last year and that we don't put in technology for technology's sake, that we developed an educational vision and instructional folk I and that we've made choices around technology that would help us to support that. When I got to the conference, I knew that's why they had asked me to come and speak on a panel on moving initiatives forward, but I was really struck by my two days. It was a very long two days. It's actually a working session of 50 CIOs, chief information officers, and assistant superintendents and superintendents from around the country. There were folks there from Michigan and Illinois, Texas, California, New York, several other people from Massachusetts. And so you work from about eight o'clock in the morning to 9:30 each night for two days in working groups. And it became apparent to me that we actually have a very different philosophy than many other school districts. And there were many school districts there that were all about the technology and the technical aspects of it. And so it was, it was quite different. It was, we got a lot of positive feedback from the work that we're doing in Arlington. There were a number of districts that asked to contact us to talk to us, to me at further length about the work that we're doing because it is quite different. And I think that's, speaks to our success.
All right, anyway, we're glad that you went and represented us. And I think that's the important message too. And I think it's important as we increasingly spend large amounts of money to say that we're doing it very carefully, strategically. Whenever we begin a particular new initiative, for example, the sixth grade this year is now a one-to-one grade in our middle school. It began with a pilot and so there's all, there's steps of looking at where we're going before we sort of just jump in and supply a lot of devices without having any plan for them. So I commend Laura for your work on this. Want to touch base on the enrollment. You received the enrollment report. I cannot say these are official numbers. I'm going to get the official numbers for you, but where we stand right now, and there's been a lot of fluctuation, is that we are about 2% over what our numbers were last year. And the fluctuation that's occurred, and if you've looked at these reports all month, is our, our two people who, our two people who are working with data, making sure that there are, that students, obviously that are registered are represented in power school, but almost equally important, that students that have withdrawn are represent, are withdrawn from power school as well, so that those numbers are as accurate as they can possibly be. So in that process, there's been a lot of, you know, one week, it looks like we have a 3% growth, then it goes down two and a half. It's been bouncing all over. And so I'll give you the final numbers once I have those. But the big picture of it all is that we're growing. And that, that trend of 2%, actually on a population of over 5,000, when we say we're going to have a thousand students in 10 years, it, it would be based on doing exactly that, growing at about 2% every year. So what we're seeing is real, at least right now, and of course, as you know from the forecasting that was done, that, that this is a, this is a big problem and we've spent a lot of time already this evening on it, but I think that it's worth saying that it is a problem that we can't put our heads in the sand about. And we have to find a solution that we all can agree is the best for Arlington. And I'm confident that we will. The other thing I want to mention, which I did in the newsletter that came out this week, is that Arlington is experiencing, just like a lot of communities in Massachusetts, but perhaps even a little bit more so, the opiate crisis. And it is a significant issue. I think one of the things that's been a problem over the years with this is sort of the stigma and the shame that has gone on with people not wanting to admit to an addiction, which has contributed, I think, to a lot of the overdose. We have an, we have an incredible police and fire department in this town and I truly mean that. A number of people are alive today because of their quick action and they're planning about having Narcan available and responding so quickly in times of crisis. And they're also being very proactive, the police department's being very proactive in, once they have identified perhaps an individual who may be in high risk, of educating their family about Narcan and also providing it. So we have a very proactive police department and we also have, which is somewhat unique in Arlington, a coalition of all of the, all of the, all of the human services part, including the public schools, that is represented on the Coalition for Substance Abuse, which is now, the new director being Ivy LaPlante. This coalition, which has members of the school committee, selectmen, virtually every group in town is a member of, is represented that has some, some aspect of service in this community. It's sponsoring a forum on October 13th, and that is going to be here in Town Hall from 6:30 to 8:30, focusing on identifying the community solutions in Arlington. And we have our Attorney General, Maury Healy, coming to be the keynote speaker on this. So it's again, October 13th, here at Town Hall, from 6:30 to 8:30. Couple more things. Laura, would you like, mention something about the Power School portal we're removing that?
Yes. I know that many parents and even school committee members have expressed frustration with the fact that if you have multiple students in the district, you have to have multiple Power School log-ons and passwords. Over the next two weeks, we'll be putting in the new upgrade to Power School, 9.1, and that will have a single log-on and a single sign-on for parents who have multiple students in the district. Parents will get a email or a letter from their child's school that will talk about how to, how to do that and will give you all kinds of directions. It's pretty straightforward, but you will have a single sign-on, so we're looking forward to that.
One of my frustrations is my computer won't save it as a cookie, so you have to keep, like, remembering this thing. Will that change? So you can't, it won't save your password on it, so you have to constantly go back...
I'm not sure, but I will check into that and I will let you know.
Okay. A quick Stratton update. Last night, we had a, we hosted a parent meeting at Stratton and thanked Mr. Hayner for attending as well, in which our architect, actually both archi, two architects from DRA presented to the parents what the, what the status of the plan is, looking at modulators and answering a lot of questions. I was taking notes because there were a number of very good suggestions that, that were offered by parents to think about. We're going to be simultaneously, as we work through the details of all of the modular classrooms and the, the challenges those present, just in terms of the topography of the site, well, we also need to be planning for a lot of detail. And we, we have lists, we have parent advisory groups, and we will be ready when school opens next year, but between now and then, there's going to be, need to be a significant amount of planning, right, right down to even the moves and how the cafeteria space is used and, and, you know, the kinds of coverings that will go on, the walkways, it's just, this just, the detail is, is significant. I will say that probably it might pale in comparison to the detail that's required when you move schools into various sites, having gone through that experience once. I want to report on the flag situation. Mr. Hayner brought to my attention the fact that we have a number of our flag poles at the schools which are not illuminated. And under guidelines, flags should only be, should only remain on the pole 24 hours if there is illumination. So our director of facilities, Ruthie Bennett, has been looking into this and it's been interesting that, there's a variety of reasons for the poles which are not lit, why they're not lit. One of, a couple, in one case, I think the lights are just broken. In a couple of other cases, the lights were turned off because of complaints from neighbors about the lights shining in their homes. So one of the, one of the strategies that facilities has, is looking at, and they're already have done it on one pole, is to actually put the light at the top of the pole going down. And it's a solar-powered, battery-operated alternative. And so this is, we're in the process of, of going the direction of making sure that all of our poles are lit. It's not going to happen in the next couple of days, it's going to take a little bit of time, particularly if you're, if these battery-powered lights are going to be mounted on the, on the flag poles in which there's an issue of illumination in the neighborhood. But I expect that that will, it'll, it will not take a long time. I can't give you the exact timeline when it'll be complete, but I'll certainly report out when it is. In the meantime, flags that, I think there were two schools that were afraid, and those flags are being replaced. And I think all of our flags will be in very good shape. And I know there's a policy that I think you're going to do a first read on this evening and I'll say right now that I fully support it. I think that it's definitely something that the school department can, and the facilities department, because we work hand and, hand in hand on that. It's, this kind of work as we move into this new era of a joint facilities department is something where we do have to work very collaboratively, and we are. So I'll give you an update when we have all of them completed and also we have a pole still that needs to be replaced at the high school, which our legal department has been working on because there was a mal, that pole was, I think there was a manufacturing defect in them, so, but our legal department is working on getting that pole replaced. They don't have a timeline when it's going to happen, but it's certainly going to happen this year. We also had in NOVAS, the information from EDCO, Lab and Case. We belong to two of these collaboratives and I can talk about this more at another time, but I just wanted you to be aware and the community to be aware that in the spirit of trying to be collaborative, our collaboratives are looking at whether there's any kind of financial or programmatic advantages to doing some kind of a, of a, of greater collaboration, all the way up to a possible merger. So it's, the analysis of that is beyond what I think a board, a finance, finance committee of those boards can handle. So all the boards have agreed to split the cost of having a consultant hired to provide us with some thoughts about all of that and we have a timeline of this year. So I don't think I'll be really reporting back on that much before or later in the spring when we have more information.
Excuse me, do we have a figure of how much we will be contributing?
Lab, each, each of the collaboratives will contribute 15,000, up to 15,000. The RFPs have been sent out and I don't know where the bids have come in.
Do we, do we have to vote? Do we have to vote that or is that discretionary from the superintendent?
It's not discretionary from the superintendent, it's the boards of the collaboratives, of which I'm a representative of both.
Right, but we're being assessed for 15,000, am I correct? Did I misunderstand it?
Well, not this, this school committee individually, no.
Oh, it's a total of 15,000 for, for the...
It comes out...
I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it comes out of the budgets of the different collaboratives.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the superintendent's report? Mr. Thielman?
Have you, so we have the, this, the enrollment data, is that October 1 data or is this...
The date on what you have is October 5th.
Okay, so it's...
So I don't ha, I, I don't have what is called, so these are the official October 1 numbers, but I will get that for you.
Okay, because there's a, there's, there is a discrepancy between our current numbers and what Dr. McKibben projected in his analysis by about 143 or...
Well, the answer is yes and no. This, these numbers here represent K to 12. Dr. McKibben's was preschool to 12.
Okay.
So add another, what?
Out of district.
An out-of-district, yes. He looks simply at the buildings. He did, and he included, because the preschool is part of our, lives in our high school. So you would add roughly 60 students to this number in order to compare apples to apples.
So he came at 5399, so if you added 60, that would put us at 5306.
But, yeah.
Oh, they don't include the... So you know what would be good to have at the next meeting?
Yes, we can do that next week to, to show how they match up.
Yes, I would, could you do that, the next superintendent's report?
Yes, we can do that.
Two weeks from now? How does, how do we compare to McKibben's numbers? Dr. McKibben's numbers?
Uh, Dr. Allison Ampy.
These numbers don't include out-of-district, do they? No, I didn't think so.
These numbers do not come out-of-district either. No, these are building numbers.
These are building.
Yes.
Well, don't do it on the fly.
Yeah.
Just give us the report, please.
Yeah, right.
Because it'd be good to know, yeah.
Just, just for clarification, we have two schools that have illumination on those flags. The light goes straight up. It does not go, it, it's designed just to do that. That's at Thompson and at Pierce. And is this a collaboration to put the power in for the other schools? Because the...
Most of them have lights, it's just that they're either broken or they were turned off because of neighborhood complaints.
Okay, if the, if the light is designed right, it goes straight up, it does not disperse. And if the one at Thompson, I wasn't even sure if it was on until I got on top of it and as soon as you get on top of it, it goes straight up and it hits the flag the way it's supposed to. I'm sorry, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Seuss?
Oh, one of the things I was struck by the enrollment numbers is how much retention we had at, from fifth grade to sixth grade. So we have a 97% retention rate and I'm wondering if you think, meaning that in, last year's fifth grade was five twenty, sorry, 424 and this year's sixth grade is 410. And I'm wondering, do you, if you think that that is a momentary aberration or, I mean, of course, we don't know or if you have any, any information, okay. I mean, we don't, of course, we don't entirely know what's going on with trends, but...
We don't know. Generally, when we, so, how I think about when I go from fifth grade to, to sixth grade enrollment, generally it's been in the neighborhood of a number of kids, roughly about 10, 40, 30 to 40 kids.
Right.
And that's pretty much how we've been looking at it. This year is much higher than we thought it might be.
Right, yeah.
And so the retention level was higher. Now, on the other hand...
Or kids moved in, maybe, we...
On the other hand, Ms. Johnson's projections, based on the mathematical formula and Dr. Dr. McKibben's predicted a much higher kindergarten number than we're seeing because the birth cohort, I think for that, for this particular group, was something like 560, if I remember, it was very high. And we were looking, we were taking our, what was low, but our, our usual retention from that birth cohort to kindergarten is in that 84, 85%. So we thought for sure we were going to have a, a class over 500 as well, but that did not happen. On the other hand, one of the things Dr. McKibben has said is the real... On the other hand, one of the things Dr. McKibben has said is the real indicator you got to watch is not so much kindergarten, but first grade. And first grade did go up this year. Another sort of surprise to me was that when you actually take the number of students, there actually was more, there was a greater number of students, well, it, it keeps changing from week to week, but, but there were a lot more students entering the high school than we would have expected this year. So there's always some surprises, and it's, and it's not a perfect science.
Actually, one of the things I was wondering is whether that reflects the, sort of the desirability of Arlington middle and high schools as compared to sort of the neighboring areas, that there might be sort of move-ins? That we're seeing just sort of greater people moving in.
When we, when we saw our registrations this summer, they were not, the, the new people coming to Arlington were not just elementary parents, we were seeing it across the board. And it was evidenced out by the, the increase we have in the high, at the high school.
Uh, I have, obviously, we're sitting in the selectmen's hearing room, because we've done the coup d'etat, and we're, we've taken over all-
Yes, what about the elevator?
So, the reason why we're here actually is the lack of an elevator, and so, do you have an update on that?
We have not had word as to whether it, the part has been machined and ready to ship. They haven't, they've been, we don't know.
These are comfy chairs, they might be here a while.
I think you will-
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I think you're going to be here the next-
And when Mr. Pierce comes back, one, you're going to be around the corner.
Well, we're going to have to have, I think we're going to have to have another, another off-site meeting, the next meeting for sure. What, we have till November 12th, the following month, so there might be a chance we'll be back in the school committee room by then. It's very hard, I will say one thing, it is very hard on our custodians.
Oh, I can imagine.
At IT. And it's been very hard, because even though it's just bringing up paper.
The upside is MSBA had to climb the stairs, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
Uh, Dr. Allison Ampe.
How are our students handling it?
Our students are handling it fine. We have one student who's in a wheelchair, and they, they, they have a plan between every class and how that wheelchair gets moved up and downstairs. It's carried.
Ouch.
Ouch, right. So, in, in every respect, it's, it's, it's hard to have only one elevator. And I, certainly, in any kind of plan for a school this size, we have to have two elevators.
At least.
Two elevators, just even just to have them on the, the two ends of the building. MSBA, as you know, visited, and the, the day after they were here, on that, that stormy day where we had deluge, we had a fire drill at the high school.
Oh, yeah.
Fortunately, between the raindrops, a little bit, because water had gotten into the walls and tripped the fire alarm. Though, that also happened, well, actually, the, the water part happened at, I think, Bishop, I think. Yeah, but then, then Odison also had a, a fire drill. And they were out in the rain, in the heavy rain. But I did let MSBA know about, about that, that they just, they missed the event.
And, and that we have a significant line item in our budget for duct tape?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Anything else, questions on the superintendent's report? Uh, hearing none, we are now to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which the event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant 16048 dated September 24th, 2015, total warrant amount $314,125.65. Approval of minutes, approval of draft school committee regular minutes dated September 24th, 2015. Approval of job description, field monitor supervisor. Without an objection, moved by Mr. Heiner, seconded by Ms. Starks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is a unanimous vote. Subcommittee and liaison reports, policies and procedures. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Okay, so acting as in lieu of Mr. Pierce, who was chair, policy met on, I don't know, in, in the end of, like, the 28th of September. We discussed a few different polit, we discussed the bullying policy and the physical restraint policy. We think they've been updated as required by the legislature. But Ms. Bouvier is going to check if there's any mandates that need to be redressed. We discussed JEB, which is looking at the kindergarten age. We've done some research, we're going to do some more, we'll talk, talk about that later. And we talked about some others, but the main one that we talked about was the flag policy, which Bill, Mr. Heiner brought to us. After making some minor changes, we voted to bring this to the full school committee for first read, so that's what you have in your packet. And I actually don't remember what it, what letter did he assign it?
JT.
JT, okay. So it would be policy JT. It discusses having budgets for sufficient funds to replace, to ensure that there's an adequate, a flag in appropriate condition for each school in the district, that, how the flags will be displayed, what kind of flags will be done, and how other things regarding whether, if they're put up and down by students. And so we're putting this out here for first read. We heard from the superintendent. One thing we were waiting on as a committee was if there was anything that the superintendent had to bring, that would shape the policy, like, we can't get the flags up and down, so they all have to be on. But I didn't really hear any insurmountable problems, so we present this to you for first read.
Any questions or comments on policy JICG tobacco, or JT, the flag? Mr. Heiner?
Just a comment on the policy. I looked at the old policy on tobacco and the current one. Neither one has state regulation references in it. And I'm, I'm sure that there are state, at least regulations, stuff that specifically address schools being tobacco-free. We've added the, the other categories as a result of that presentation. I just ask-
Okay, so, okay, so we'll keep both those back, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take, take those.
Any other questions or comments on the first reads?
Okay.
JT?
Uh, Mr. Thielman?
JT.
So the, the only question I have about that, the Arlington School Committee shall provide in its annual budget sufficient funds to maintain a flag that is in appropriate condition for each school in the district. I mean, I think, I'm always wary of putting in a policy we shall maintain, because it's, if it's the policy, we just have to follow it, and the district has to find the money. So it's, it's, I think it could be worded, the Arlington School Committee shall maintain a flag that is in appropriate condition for each school in the district.
I can accept that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I just think it's a friendly sort of a memo, we don't, because there's really don't, we don't think, I don't think there's anywhere in the policies that I can recall where we say, we shall have sufficient funds in the budget to do X.
As you stated, it meets the criteria.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll bring that back, and just, and JIB's key needed references.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
With that objection, these two policies have completed first reading. Anything else from policies and procedures?
No.
Budget, Dr. Allison Ampe.
I'm with my budget hat on. Budget will be meeting in the next couple of weeks. I'll send out a doodle, we need to come up with a budget calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Facilities, Cindy Starks?
All right, well, seems to be the talk of the day. So my, having had the meeting on the 24th, I feel like we need to move forward, but I'm not really sure how to move forward. Because, as I said tonight, I don't think this is just our decision. I mean, I think we can drive it, because we're the ones with the problem, and we need to kind of come up with, or at least help get a solution. But, you know, I don't, I mean, I, ah, I don't know who to involve, I don't know who to, I mean, I don't feel like as the facilities subcommittee, that that is the right, it's too small, it's too whatever, to kind of move this forward. I feel like we need to include, if nothing else, the other members of those committees in the town, you know, even if it's not, even if the next meeting doesn't necessarily include, like, a lot of public participation, we at least need a meeting with the town manager and the, you know, you know, all the building people and the money people, and try to figure out how we want to move this forward. I mean, I do agree that we need to understand, you know, from, probably from the superintendent, what the timeline is. You know, I feel like we need a lot more thought on a lot more possibilities. I, I really want to have some kind of a brainstorming session where we put any wacky and crazy and whatever idea out there, and try to get our heads around what, you know, what we're thinking. And then, and then, but I, I just, so as, as the, I feel like I, as the facilities, you know, chair, I felt like I should have more, but I feel like I, every time I try to come up with a plan, I feel like, is it even my place to have a plan yet? Because I feel like that meeting so said to me, wow, this is such a big decision. So I'm kind of coming to this meeting, you know, kind of asking all of you, kind of, what do you think? How do we think we should move this forward? And, and kind of, you know, I'm willing to take direction and kind of take input as to how we should kind of proceed.
Well, let me, let me say this, is that we dance around two domains here. We're talking about a facilities issue, but we're really engaging in the, in the, in the pool of community relations, in going out to the community, making our case, gathering support, soliciting opinions, developing maybe a website or some other format where people can, where we can aggregate select, uh, suggestions and talk about possibilities. So that my idea on doing this is to arrange some sort of a joint responsibility between facilities and community relations, and seeing it's probably more of a community, community relations issue, with community relations sort of being in the lead of this, to come up with some sort of a process for collecting suggestions, opinions, thoughts, ideas, and pushing information, the, the information the folks have asked for out to the community. So I'll ask Dr. Seuss to ta, speak on this first, and I'll go to Mr. Heiner.
So, yeah, so I, I see there's sort of two things that we need to do, and they're, and they need not be the same committee. So one is sort of a working group that has to include town manager, capital planning, school committee, so forth. Where, where nitty-gritty stuff like, how do we get the money, you know, is dealt with. There's also a secondary thing, which is very appropriate for community relations, which is outreach to the community, engagement with the community, soliciting ideas, publicizing ideas. And luckily, the chair of the facilities committee is also in the community relations committee, so that's, that really helps.
How good is that?
So, so I think those are two separate things, although I think, I encourage people to go to both sort of types of meetings. We do have a community relations subcommittee meeting on November 2nd. I don't know if that feels too late to people to talk about ideas. I mean, that certainly was going to be one of the agenda items on it. I mean, I, yeah, I think a, a website, a public forum where that's sort of an open it, you know, gather in small groups, come together, just to solicit ideas, engage the community would be the right kind of approach to take at this point. Does November 2nd feel too late to sort of come up with those ideas, or?
I'll ask for the opinion of the committee. Uh, Mr. Heiner?
I agree with Ms. Starks that this is something that has to be a broad community thing. We said that tonight, each one of us, in one way or another. I think the template for that was that community meeting that we had on the 24th of September. We don't need to have every member of a board there. I would, I would suggest that, that there are two basic policy committees in this town, the school committee and the selectmen. But it's important to engage the other committees, finance and capital planning and stuff like that. I would suggest that through either the chair or Ms. Starks, an invitation, go out and invite one member of them. I think community engagement itself should happen, once a, a plan is formed to what, what materials that are needed, or at least start that with the, these committees, and then open it up. Just, I'm not suggesting not listening to the community. I think that's most important, because you're not going to pass anything without community involvement and engagement. But I think it's important that a, a small core group initially started and expand from that. So, that's my opinion.
Mr. Thielman?
I think it's important for us to get a sense of what the deadlines are in this whole process.
Yeah.
So, when do we have to make a decision that impacts the tenants at the Gibbs facility? By contract, by, by our lease agreement? And then, you know, what are, what are the timelines for, and what are the decision points? And so I would, you know, I think, I think an efficient way to do this is to ask the superintendent and the town manager to tell us that. To kind of give us a memo on, here are the decision points, here are the deadlines. And then, once we get that memo, which I think you could probably do in, I mean, I'm-
We're already talking about that.
You're doing it, so we can get it in two weeks. Once we get that, then we can figure out which committees need to meet. And no matter what we do, once we get the memo that tells us what the decision points are and the deadlines are, you know, making sure that there's a lot of public input is absolutely critical. We're going to have no credibility.
And a decision we have to- Dr. Allison Ampe?
I have questions that I would love Facilities to field. There are things that, when I start thinking about trying to make a decision like this, they're information that I'd like to have, and I'll, I'll send them to you, but it's things like, what's the impact of two small core spaces on students? What's the educational effect of schools with different compositions? With single grade, or if you move the 8th grade to the high school, you know, what are their pluses or minuses? Does the point of two small vary per core space? And how do the different schools, how are they set up? You know, maybe the Odison Cafeteria can only handle 1,000 kids for cafeteria, I'm sorry, Odison Cafeteria can only handle 1,000 kids, but the gyms can handle 1,200. You know, we need to know where these spots are. What do modules look like? How do they function? How do they age? If mechanicals in them break down, can they be replaced? And what's, you know, what's the timelines for this? Because for many of these decisions, we're not just spending money now, we're, we're encumbering our future members to spend money later. And I'd like to have some idea of when those chunks of money are going to be coming due. I'm not saying you can answer all of these things, but some of-
I know, but I think that's a great, I feel like, I feel like that's a great way to do it, is to start asking the higher-level questions.
Yeah, it's, we're going to need this information, no matter what, and then, yes.
And from that, we help us make the decisions as we move forward.
Yeah, so that's, so I was going to send you those, and I've got more, but it's stuff like that, that I think, you know, these are things where I'm going, do I go this way, or do I go that way? And I need to know this sort of thing, and maybe other people have other ideas, but that's-
You start.
So I, I think, I think what I'm, I'm hearing is that if I can, I think that what we probably need is a facilities subcommittee meeting. And at that, maybe invite the town manager, and we can talk about timelines, and we can talk about some of these higher-level questions, and start getting a picture of the questions we want answered, as well as what our timeline is, especially given the enrollment numbers aren't quite as bad as we thought they might be.
We don't know yet, we're waiting for that report.
Right, so all of that, right? So all of those kind of moving parts. So I feel like maybe something actually around November, or, you know, but within a week or two, you know, of that. And then, and that, that will help us in the planning part, and that I agree that community, it also allows community relations to go off and do community relations stuff, which is gather that input and help kind of figure out all of the stuff that people are saying, and kind of help, help kind of, you know, pull that together as well.
Mr. Thielman?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, set the meeting, and that also gives a deadline for a report from the superintendent and the town manager, and then we can look at the timelines and the decision points. Because as Lori Cole said, you know, one decision, one decision that you make creates, eliminates other options. So the other thing that I want to say is- So the other thing that I want to say is that I'm all in favor of getting all the town boards and all people in the town involved in the process. But at the, and I'm, I don't know, I haven't seen a memo on the process yet. A, a task force could be a good thing, but at the end of the day, it's an educational decision. So it's a school committee decision. It's a school committee vote.
Yeah.
And I just want to put that out there.
Yeah.
It's ultimately this board's responsibility.
It is, but we have to get the money from the right people.
We do, but there's, but there's.
We can't, we can't make a decision to just go build all kinds of new schools and the town's not going to do it.
But let me speak to that, let me speak to that. Because we have the experience at the Thompson School and the other schools. So there is a process that the school committee drives.
Yes.
To get the capital planning committee, the town meeting, the town manager, the board of selectmen. We've been through that, where there's a process we drive to get those folks on board with a vote for funding.
Right.
So we will, you know, we, and that's, could happen, can happen, it should happen again, might happen again, depending on what our options are.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to take these out of order, do community relations, then go back to district accountability.
Wait, wait, I still have a question.
Okay. A quick question, go ahead.
Oh, you can go first. I have another question on facilities.
Okay.
Oh, no, actually, I just had a comment that, that I think these conversations can go on in parallel, so that.
Yes.
Right, so that we don't have to wait for one to get the other.
Exactly. And I, I agree that that really helps free it up.
Yes, yeah.
I think that's where I was.
Ms. Starks?
I'm still, I was wondering if we can get an update on the Hardy playground.
Ah, yes.
Contracts are in my, in my inbox, and they're waiting for a timeline from them. They're reaching out to vendors for parts, but the contracts are adjourned.
Oh, cool. All right, awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Now, uh, community relations.
Oh, so we haven't met since the last meeting, but we have one scheduled. It's very hard to schedule, November 2nd. So, in which we will discuss a little bit of the survey results from last year. I just want to present a report to the committee. Certainly, all this stuff about how we're going to reach out to the community, about the changes happening. And there was one other thing, which I forgot, but that's, that's probably, that's our big agenda.
Okay. District accountability, curriculum instruction and assessment.
We'll meet some, we'll meet sometime after the superintendent's evaluation process is complete for this year.
Okay. Executive session, minute review subcommittee.
One person has met his obligation, still, still waiting for the other two.
Uh, I am ashamed I'm one of the other two.
Who were the other two?
Mr. Pierce and our chair.
Oh, good, so glad it wasn't, okay.
No, it wasn't you.
Oh, my God, then I forget that.
It's not your fault.
I would have already.
You would have pinged me, I know.
Would have told you.
You would have, okay, thank you, yeah.
A special study group on superintendent evaluation is gone away. Warrant committee, Mr. Hayner?
Uh, the warrant, warrants have been signed, and I would ask, at one time, we had announcements for the, from the committee members.
We're going to go to that as soon as we're done with the warrant committee.
It got signed, and everybody got paid, as far as I know.
Excellent. Now, do any members have any wa, uh, announcements at all? Mr. Hayner?
Just want to commend the superintendent and the architects that were up at Stratton in their presentation the other night. There were quite a few questions by the parents. Several of them redesigned, wanted different things to happen, and I commend the, the architects how they answered it clearly and upfront, and the safety of the children, and there were some very good questions from parents last night. And it was quite a few people there, very active. And it went well, I thought. I stayed for the, because I'm liaison, and now at Stratton, I stayed afterwards, and there was no continued discussion on it, so I think they were very satisfied from what they heard. They're going to continue to be active in it, but it went well. Thank you.
Ms. Starks?
Um, I just wanted to let people know that, I know that the Thompson, we've been in it for a while, but we're almost done with the video.
Uh-huh.
We made a video about rebuilding the Thompson.